Councilor Shabbat just asked to stop without her, so I will do that. So I'm going to ask everybody to stand for the Pledge of Allegiance to open the July 26th meeting in the 2018 Town Council. The flag's way over there. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Mrs. Mallow.
Counselor Ryan.
President.
Counselor Hilton.
Present.
Counselor DiMederos.
Present.
Counselor Edwards.
Present.
Counselor LeBeau.
Here.
And Counselor Shabbat is going to be about five minutes late. Counselor Perry is absent.
This is a public hearing and vote on proposed charter amendments for the submission on the November ballot. I'm sure you're all aware of the process that has occurred. We have elected a Charter Commission last July. This Charter Commission took a year and did a lot of deliberations, and I want to thank you for all their efforts and the multiple meetings that they had. They came to us with 20 priority proposals and 20 other proposals for us to consider. We had several meetings with them, and what you see in front of you today is what the council has picked as their priorities. This is a slightly modified version of what they gave to us and, in some cases, exactly what they gave to us. Once again, I'd like to thank the Charter Commission for all their work. They amended their commission as of, I think, yesterday and the day before yesterday, I'm sorry, the 24th. So I'm going to begin. What I'm going to do is I'm going to go through each one. I am opening the public meeting right now. I am going to read each one of these proposals, and I will ask for public comment, and we are eager to hear from all of you to see what you think of these. And at the end, I'll close it, and then we up here will decide what will be put on the ballot. Through a lot of discussion, we were trying to cut it down between five and 10. Some of the councilors are thinking more of the five to be on the ballot, but we'll see what happens at the end of the night. Number one, shall the town charter be amended to give the town council greater discretion in forming an employment agreement with the department heads? At this point, I'd like any public comment, please. Now, just to explain this, we just wanted more leeway considering on who we employ, what we feel at the time is exactly what we need because our needs change as the town grows. So we didn't want the charter to be so strict as to what these department heads required to need or what they were going to do because, as we know, we are growing and our needs are changing, so that's what we asked for this to be on there for. And if any of the councilors want to say anything else about this, John?
Madam President, I would also add that this will give the town the ability to be more flexible when extending contracts to the right candidate, so it'll help us better recruit and retain personnel to work here in the town, which, as many of you know, has been a struggle recently to retain personnel. So I think it's a good idea to allow us more flexibility to not only find the right person, but make sure the right person is here for the duration.
Any public comment regarding number one? Number two. Oh, I'm sorry. Come on, Bill. I just need you to state your name and address, please.
Sure. Bill Gerlach, 506 King Road. Could you just sort of a point of order explain how we in the public should be looking at Packet Item A versus Packet Item B here? How are they connected?
The solicitor has asked to explain this. Go ahead.
Sure. Thank you.
Mr. Gerlach, it's a two-part process. The first part that you're seeing is the proposed language that would be on the ballot for the voters to take a look at, and that is meant to be descriptive of the changes that would be specifically in the charter. For Question One, there are actually several articles in the charter, and you'll see that in your second packet. That would be the actual changes to the language in the town charter. And specifically for this Question One, in all of these sections that are cited for the department heads and the town administrator, there is a phrase in there that the contracts are not to exceed three years. That is the language that would be eliminated in the town charter.
If it, if the question passes.
If the question passes.
If it passes.
But that's...
You're correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah. So if you see, Bill, it goes through every department head and how we wanted to change... Okay. Yeah. Thank you.
Can I just add one thing?
Yes, go ahead.
And the reason for that is if all of these changes, you couldn't place it on the ballot. So this is the language that would go to the Secretary of State. This is what you'd be voting on, but you can see what the changes would be in the charter if approved by the voters.
Anyone else? Please comment if you have anything.
Madam President?
Yes.
Just since we're going to continue the public hearing all the way through, I think it'd be good that, since some people just picked up the packets, maybe they might have questions on question number one as we get to the later questions. So we're not moving beyond one. We're just making sure that you have the ability to read through it, and if you do have specific questions on one later on, please feel free to come back up.
Question Two. Anyone else? Is someone else coming up?
Susan Anderson, 1137 Main Road. So does this mean you're zeroing out all the contract period not to exceed? Does this mean that once you appoint them, they could be in for a year? They could be in for five years? They could be in for how long? Because you don't have any limit to how long they can be in.
Go ahead.
That's not correct to the extent that there are limits that a town council can do to bind the town. I think the intent of this, rather, is to allow for either situations where there is no contract on it so that somebody is serving at will or the pleasure of the council, or you could have a shorter one. I can't say it goes past three years, but you're technically correct. It could be a contract executed for longer than that.
Yeah, because you've wiped out the not-to-exceed limit, so that's what I'm saying. They could be in there for decades if they do a good job.
But we could also go lower than that depending on what the council at the time feels. So it just gives more leeway for that council to decide how long that employment would be. Like if someone comes to us and says, "And we think this is a wonderful candidate, and I would like to do this for four years if he has the qualifications, and we feel that we need to stick with this guy for four years," but at any point, it is at will. So at any point, we could say, "It's not working." But this is just in case that we know that we can keep someone if it goes a little longer.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome. Is that okay?
Yes.
Charter amendments regarding vacancy of elected positions, Article 13, Section 8 of the Rhode Island Constitution. Shall the town charter be amended to provide that if an elected position other than the town clerk or town treasurer becomes vacant, the vacancies shall be filled by the next highest vote added for that position? As you know, in the past, it's been somewhat of a controversy when somebody quits or we have an opening that there's always some kind of controversy, should we do the next elected official? As a group, we decided that this was a worthy thing to look at. We picked the town clerk and town treasurer because a lot of times, it's only two candidates that run for that position, and sometimes the second candidate gets very little votes. That is not to mean that second candidate couldn't come to us and say, "I want the position," and if we felt that they were appropriate for the position or if we felt that they had the ability to do the position, then we would give that position. But it's because usually for those positions, there's only two people, and we felt that this would give us a little more leeway with those two positions. But as far as the other positions, we decided that this was the way to go. Debbie?
Hi, Deb Polish, Lake Road. Just quickly, and maybe it's in here and I missed it, municipal court judge? Because he's elected too. Does he want to be excluded from the appoint... I mean, I guess they don't... Because we could have... Could we have a situation? Usually, we just have one that runs but has two or three.
The municipal court judge is appointed.
It would be the probate judge. I'm sorry.
By state law, if the probate court judge is unable to serve, by state law, the town solicitor actually steps in.
Okay, so the state law covers that, so we don't need it in the charter.
That's a state law position.
It would be Tony if that happened.
Yes.
Okay.
And in fact, there's times when the...
Because I knew one of the judges was elected, so I was just making sure that...
Yes.
Okay.
But there's times when your probate court judge is either on vacation or whatever, and then by state law, I fill in for him.
So that's a state law that covers it, so we just don't need it.
That's correct, yes.
Perfect. Thank you.
Any other comments or questions from the audience? And like Counselor Edwards said, at any point, you may come back to this if you're thinking about it and you decide you have another question. We will always go back to the other questions. Charter amendment regarding advocacy by town officials, Article 13, Section 8 of the Rhode Island Constitution. Shall the town council be amended... I'm sorry. Shall the town charter be amended to clarify that the town officials and employees may engage in political advocacy activities on their own personal time and expenses? This has always been a problem. Some of us have been accused of doing things and being in office, and we can't do things on our own personal time. It's caused a lot of controversy. It's also caused several charter complaints. We felt that this was very important, that as private citizens, anyone that's elected is allowed to do anything on their personal time as long as they're not using town facilities or town revenues or whatever. But we felt our personal time is our personal time, and there was a lot of people that felt that way, and it's caused a lot of problems. So this is why we felt that this needed to be added. Sally?
Yes, thank you very much for putting this one on. When it was first approved, when the council was to vote on it, a member of the council said, "I have a real problem with this one." And they said, "What is the problem?" And she said, "That pesky constitution." So any of us that have been elected, when we stand in front of the polls, either for the budget or anything else, we're using our labor. So at any time, we could have had another charter complaint put against us. So I can take my duct tape off my mouth if this passes, and it'll be very exciting. Thank you very much.
And it's been looked at several ways, like calling our personal friends and asking them to vote for something that we believe in, and we've been told that we shouldn't be doing that either. So we just wanted to clarify that elected officials' personal time is their personal time, and if they wish to advocate for something that they believe in, that nobody can say that this is a charter complaint because the old charter... And as some of you know, there has been charter complaints regarding this. Any other comments? I see Counselor Shabbat, so... They're all clapping for you, Joan. Charter amendment regarding charter complaints, Article 13, Section 8 of the Rhode Island Constitution. Shall the town charter be amended so that the charter complaints are independently reviewed and prosecuted by the town solicitor without any interference or influence by any elected or appointed town official or any town employee? One of the reasons for this is to take the town clerk out of this, and we felt that many charter complaints have been filed against the town clerk because of this and making the town solicitor, the person that decides if it goes forward, seem to be the best way to do it and the less political way to do it. And that's why we thought that this was worthy of putting on the ballot. Does anyone have any comments or questions? Hi.
Jason Mallow, 70, Shannon Avenue. I just felt that the wording on this seemed a little vague towards the end, where you have "any interference or influence by any elected or appointed town official or any town employee." I mean, if you have a situation where there is a town official or a town employee that is directly, that is involved in this, there's obviously going to be influence, there's obviously going to be a discussion with that town employee. So I don't know. That one just strikes as, you know, someone got hurt, and this is language in particular to remedy a situation. It feels a little personal on that, but...
No, it really isn't. Tony, would you like to... I can say a little more.
Yeah, because of the... As a practical matter, when a charter complaint comes in, it's always referred to the town... At least since I've been here, it's been referred to the town solicitor for an analysis anyway. But in the language in Question Four, that would go into the charter on Page Four, subsection D, "Interference Prohibited," that paragraph is an attempt to make sure that there is not a political process in this, but rather, it is just based on the merits of the complaint that is made. So...
Is it ever not based on the merits of the complaint? That's why I'm confused as to the language.
Let me put it this way. It's been accused that it is based on politics rather than the merits of the complaint. So that's why if you have an independent person that's not involved in the process, he can make... It'll look more transparent. Is that a good way to put it? Because we've been... Sometimes, we've been accused of making the decision because of politics or because of who's involved. And believe me, I've been here for many of these charter complaints, and I believe that this would make this process so much less political, even if it never was, but we've been accused of it. Any other comments or questions? Charter amendments regarding board membership, Article 13, Section 8 of the Rhode Island Constitution. Shall the town charter be amended to reduce the number of members on the Budget Committee and Planning Board by two members each and to provide for Budget Committee docket secretary instead of a Budget Committee treasurer? The Charter Commission heard a lot of people testifying for this. They've spoke to Budget Committee members, Planning Board members. We... Especially with the Planning Board, we have a hard time filling those positions. So the theory, I believe, was if we reduce the number, it may be a little easier to get a full quorum when they're making decisions instead of people being absent. The Budget Committee, I know this has been discussed with members of the Budget Committee. This is one of the recommendations, definitely from the Charter Commission, that we haven't really changed, I believe. As far as the Budget Committee docket secretary, the Budget Committee doesn't really have any money. They don't need a treasurer. They need a secretary more than anything else, and there's been a lot of problems with getting someone to do this. In the charter, it says treasurer, and quite frankly, a lot of people didn't feel that that was necessary. Any comments? I know there's members of the Budget Committee here. I don't know if they would like to make a comment or maybe members of the Planning Board.
Madam President.
Yeah, I was going to have Deb.
Okay. I was just going to say very quickly, too, the Planning Board, when they make decisions, their decisions are based off of a majority of the total board, not those present. So, for instance, if there are two members of the council not here, the decisions can pass by a 3-2 vote, whereas the Planning Board, if they were missing some people or people were conflicted out, it causes problems with them not being able to make a decision because there may not be a majority present.
Debbie?
Deb Janik, Judson Street.
You can live that up.
Can I do that thing on the side? Or actually, you know, you just pull it right up. Thank you. So yeah, I am on the Budget Committee. The number is fine. We did sometimes have trouble getting a quorum. As far as the changing of the docket secretary from the Budget Committee treasurer, it's just a name change. The person who was in that role as the treasurer was doing the docket. She was doing the docket that's presented at the FTR, so it really is just semantics. The role is still the same.
Of course, because the Budget Committee is elected, it's going to take, I think, a couple of years before this comes in full effect because of the elections and everything. And the elections right now is going to put the old number there, so eventually, we'll get to that number, but it won't be immediate. Charter amendment regarding recall petition, Article 13, Section 8 of the Rhode Island Constitution. Shall the town charter be amended to change the procedure for recalling elected officials, including changing the amount of signatures required on petition, setting a 75-day period for collecting signatures, and requiring a 55% supermajority vote for recall? There's been a lot of conflicts with the way we do the recall petition, and believe it or not, we still have recall petitions that are sitting in Nancy's office that have been there for five years because there's no end to it, and some of these people are well gone. So that's why some of this was added. I don't know if any of the other councilors would like to add to this. It simplifies the process and makes it much easier than... Well, not easier to recall someone, but easier to understand. Any questions? And like I said, just digest this, and I'll come back. I'll ask if you have questions regarding any of these.
Madam President?
Yes.
It's not just questions, also comments. So if you're in favor of, against, whatever, come up and share your thoughts.
We welcome everything. Charter amendment regarding town treasurer and town clerk. Shall the town charter be amended to provide health benefits for the elected full-time town treasurer and town clerk? The town clerk was one of the ones that advocated for this. The town treasurer this time does not... And correct me if I'm wrong, Nancy. The town treasurer does not have the ability to get health insurance, but the town clerk does. So she asked that the town treasurer also be included because the town treasurer is also elected, and so is the town clerk, and she felt it was only fair to include that. This town treasurer doesn't participate, but you don't know what's coming down the pike, and it might be someone who would be interested in it. Any questions or comments? Charter amendment regarding temporary employees, Article 13, Section 8 of the Rhode Island Constitution. Shall the town charter be amended to transfer duties of hiring part-time acting temporary seasonal employees from the personnel board to the town administrator? The reason for this is, and correct me if I'm wrong, please, it's been a long process. The personnel board is a very good board, but it takes them a while to do their interviews, to go through their process. Sometimes, as far as right now, where we need lifeguards or gate attendants or other things for certain parts of the season, it's a much easier process if the town administrator would interview, get the applicants, interview them, because the personnel board is a process, and it takes several weeks, sometimes a couple of months, and sometimes we need these employees next week. So that's why we asked that these special employees, the seasonal or part-timers, be the town administrator's responsibility. Yeah, okay. I'm telling you, this has been here long, so I'm trying to remember all of this. Any questions, concerns, comments? Charter amendment regarding non-substantive changes. Shall the town charter be amended to make various non-substantive changes to reorganize the charter, fix grammatical errors, and improve the flow and readability of the charter? As we went through the charter ourselves and the Charter Commission, there was many things that were very simple that needed to be changed, especially sentences that weren't properly put, and this is just asking that... This is really just cleaning up house and making sure that the document is proper, and as we've gone through it, I've noticed some little things that need to be changed, but it's not. It has nothing to do with how the town runs.
I just had a quick question under this because I know one of the things that we had looked at as the EDC was just doing a description of the EDC and responsibilities, so that would be covered under this, okay? Because we just sort of tried to clean that up a bit.
I believe so. Yes. It is actually things like that.
Okay.
Anyone else?
Madam President?
Yes.
So I had a couple of questions here. I don't remember talking about it. Who is going to do this?
The lawyer.
And how...
The solicitor.
Does he know that?
Yes.
Yes. I believe he does. No, I'm just telling him to do it.
No, no, no. Well, I'm asking for a reason, but I guess for some people, what is readable, for other people, it is not readable, and I guess substantive change is also a subjective thing. So that's another thing. So is there... I would be okay with it if you have some way for the public meeting to get input in it when it's done. So is that...
Correct, yes.
So if this passes...
I don't know if that's possible.
No, no, no. You have... If you take a look at Question Nine, you have these changes already.
Yeah, they're here.
Yeah, I know. But these people haven't... I mean, they just got the packet. They just got the packet, and other people who are going to be voting on this...
They will have this packet, though.
They will have this packet, but I guess... But there's more than one change here.
Yes.
So is there going to be any change? Because one of the problems with having multiple changes with a yes/no question is that you might agree with some things, but you might not agree with others. So all I'm asking is, is there going to be a public meeting? So it's a yes/no. That's it?
Yeah, after tonight, no.
But if you look at it, it's...
Madam President?
Yes.
Just to jump in here, so everybody, really quickly. It's literally revising what the section number is for the Director of Senior Citizens. It's deleting initial language from when the charter was created that says, "This charter shall not be replaced nor amended for a period of at least two years following adoption." I mean, it's already adopted, so there's no need for that to still be in there anymore. It deletes the line that references to commissions or to commissions that are actually not part of the town, and that's it. So it's... I think there's only a couple of things in here.
That's it?
So it's not like it's a massive change.
Kelly?
Kelly Levesque, 217 Crandall Road. Two things under the senior citizens director. One, to third line down at the end, it says renewal contacts. It should be contracts.
There you go.
If you're making grammatical spelling checks. And also, why didn't you remove the three-year clause from the senior center director when you removed it from other people?
Actually, I agree on the not exceeding three years, but it should be renewal contracts because it contemplates contracts going in the future. That's why it's plural.
Yeah, but it says contact, contacts, not contracts.
It's contacts right here.
By Jove, you're right.
Yeah.
There's a missing R.
Yeah.
Thank you.
And you are right.
That actually should be deleted based on the prior question because it's a...
Not to exceed to begin. It should be deleted.
Correct. Correct.
Thank you. Thank you, Kelly. Shall the town charter be amended to combine to reorganize the town planner, building official, zoning official, administrative office, sir mechanical inspector, electrical inspector, and plumbing inspector into a land use development department? And in a way, this is kind of cleaning house because we decided this a few months ago, and the town council has combined this. So in the old charter, it's very different than what we do now, and that's why we fixed this. This is what we are actually doing right now.
Very self-explanatory.
Yeah, it's very self-explanatory. I mean, if people decide they don't want that, well, that's the process. We needed to change it because it was all separate departments, which is not what is occurring. Kelly?
Okay, so on Page Two, on A, let's somehow word that first sentence... Okay, so on page two, on A, let's somehow word that first sentence. Shall the town charter be amended to combine the reorganize the town planner?
Yeah, you're right. It's a grammar thing, and I did it as I was saying it. You see that?
Yes.
I don't know if you know, you notice, but I kind of stumbled over that. Barbara?
Barbara Martin, 313 Neck Road. By combining all of these different officials into one department, you're not getting rid of, or combining the separate things, are you? The separate positions?
No, the positions stay the same. It's just they're all working together. I don't know if you've noticed, the offices have changed where they're all together. No, it's just so there can be a more cohesiveness between all of them, and they all talk to each other, and they're all part of one department. Because sometimes we've noticed that the different departments have kind of done things on their own. Now they're all together.
That makes sense. I know they do that in Bristol. They're all under one roof.
Yeah, and that's, and it is working out pretty well. So hopefully, it still will.
Madam President?
Yes.
Just to add to that, it eliminates the siloed nature of every department that touches the, anything that has to do with land use, and puts them all together. So they're, you know, able to work together. So just think of it as, you know, now they're on one silo where they were originally in three or four.
Okay, charter, I'm going to go on to 11, but rest assured, I'll let any of you speak on any of these. Charter amendment regarding boards and commissions. Shall the town charter be amended to allow town employees to serve on town boards and commissions so long as there is no conflict of interest? There's a lot of town employees that would really help on some of these boards because of their special interests, because of their hobbies, because of their abilities. And as of this time, they weren't really allowed to do that. As long as it doesn't interfere with their job, and they're not influencing anything that's in regard to their job, we saw no problems if town employees would like to participate because sometimes that comes in handy.
Jim Spears, West DeMello Drive, and also a member of the Historical Cemeteries Commission. Will the first sentence of the original wording be stricken? In other words, a member of a board or commission is not now required to be an elector? Because there are people in Tiverton who choose not to be elected, but are taxpayers.
There's been a lot of discussion on that with the Charter Commission and also us. And we have talked about it. There's some counselors that actually felt if you chose not to vote, why shouldn't you still be able to participate in some of these commissions? And we did not choose to put this in here, but thank you for your input, and it may change our minds. But yes, go ahead, Trish.
The reason I brought this up in the first place is that, at least in the case of Historical Cemeteries Commission, we have a considerable amount of trouble getting a quorum. And we have member, we have people who would love to be members who have long roots in Tiverton but don't happen to either live in Tiverton at the present time or choose to vote.
Well, that's a whole different thing. We talked about town residents that weren't electors. We didn't, we had a lot of discussion about non-residents. And at the time that this came up, as far as I know, the town council decided as a group that we would rather not have non-residents be part of this.
But at the present time, if the wording in blue is accepted, then that sentence disappears, which means that effectively anyone could be a member of a board or commission. Because the text that's, am I correct on that, or does that sentence stay in there? Am I reading it wrong?
Counsel Hilton's been dying to say something. Go ahead, Trish.
I think that, I think one of the things that is a little confusing here and might need to be clarified in the question is that being an employee who might be able to be on a board or commission does not remove you from the primary requirement that you're an elector.
Right.
So it, which it states in the, you know, in the longer text, but it's not very clear in the question. So maybe the question needs to be slightly amended so folks realize that it's, being, being an employee alone is not qualify you to necessarily apply for a board or commission.
You have to be an elector.
You're an employee who happens to also, most importantly, be an elector in the community.
And Tony's changing it as we said. That's, that's what it was intended to be.
Okay, so then, as far as the future goes, for now, at least until the next round of this, people who are not electors will not be allowed to be board or commission members?
Yes.
Okay.
As it stands right now.
Which is an unfortunate choice, in my opinion.
Well, that's, that's what this public hearing is about. If you have, if you wanted to change it, that's what we're here to listen to.
That would be my recommendation. Because I do believe that Historical Cemeteries Commission is not the only commission that, board or commission for which quorums are difficult, and attracting people who are particularly interested in the particular subject is not that easy.
Anyone? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
I want to ditto what Jim said because I have the same problem. Historical Preservation Advisory Board, we are lacking a member, and I'm having a hard time doing that. And I know there's people in town that choose not to vote because they don't want to be on the jury duty. And that's why. I mean, it's a silly thing, but they just don't want jury duty, so therefore, they choose not to be an elector. But they are very qualified in being on one of the historic boards or, you know, any of the boards. But I really wish that you would pay attention to what Jim said and just wipe out must-be electors.
So you want to get rid of the must-be electors. What I'm understanding from Jim is he wants non-residents also to participate. Is that correct? Yes.
And that would be nice for me, too, because I know that there are people that their families have lived in Tiverton for eons, and they have maybe moved to Fall River or, you know, a neighboring community. But their families are here. Their history is here. They know the town through their families. I mean, I've been approached by several people, but it's like, I'm sorry, I can't use you because we can't have anybody that's a non-Tiverton resident. And, and like I said, I ditto what, what Jim said because we definitely need non-residents that are interested in our particular commissions, boards, whatever, and don't have to be electors of the town. Because it's an interest thing. It has nothing to do with voting in the town.
Thank you. Anyone else? Jerry?
Jerry Larkin, 232 Stony Hollow Road. So I appreciate the concerns about certain boards and commissions not being able to get adequate membership. And certainly, if people are interested, then it would be reasonable to try and include them in that. But I think there are certain boards and commissions that I would not want non-electors to be on, such as planning and zoning. And I can sort of, can think of some others as well. So perhaps we need to kind of differentiate between the different commissions and boards where, you know, an interested person with a hobby or passion for something would be, you know, perfectly fine sitting on that. But if it comes down to planning and zoning, I'm not sure I'd want someone from outside the town to actually try and get on that, commissioner board to influence its work. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Hi.
Hi.
Just had a point in regards to the, again, so long as there is no conflict of interest. Obviously, you're talking about some sort of, you know, prima facie case, like upfront case of, this is clearly going to be a conflict of interest.
Yes.
And obviously, that is going to be an exceedingly small amount. Situations where it comes up later, would it be up to Solicitor D'Assisto to decide that this is a conflict of interest now? In other words, they, they're already on the board or the commission and such, and they've served notably and with distinction for however long. But now, a situation has arisen where they're crossing a line. How do we, how do we now remove that person either from the vote or on that particular issue? Because again, I don't, I can't see, I mean, it would be rare and foolish where a person would just, just jump onto a committee where it's a clear case that they're lining their own pockets. I mean, I think everyone would, would see through that. But it's the, it's the after effects when they're on the commission for some time where there might be a problem. Who would?
Well, well, actually, any, any resident could file a complaint with the Ethics Commission. So there's a direct avenue that doesn't even go through the government for something like that.
Okay.
But, but the town administrator is in charge of the, the commissions and the boards. So if there was something and a board member was concerned, I'm sure they would go to the town administrator, and then he would get his opinion from the town solicitor, correct?
Correct.
And then steps would be done.
Okay.
Okay. Yes, go ahead, John.
Thank you, John. That's my town administrator. Since you mentioned it, I think it might be worth to differentiate as needed, meaning that you allow for an exception, maybe to be requested by the chair of a board, given certain reasons, such as difficulty of recruiting enough members for the commission, or to bring a certain amount of expertise onto a board or for commission that could use it. And the exception could then be approved by the council, perhaps.
Thank you. Debbie?
I just wanted to point out that I think the reason that the language was changed was for that very reason, because we were having trouble getting people. So by allowing employees who are electors, it now broadens the pool. And that I think the intent was to do just that, broaden the pool, and it will allow more people to sit on these boards and commissions. And maybe we will find that's not enough, but it certainly seems like a good first step.
Yes.
I'd just like to point out that everyone who's a member of a board or commission in Tiverton is subject to the Rhode Island's ethics rules, which involve voting on matters that involve you or your employer. So I would expect that if you're an employee and you're serving on a volunteer board or commission, that you'll be familiar with those same rules just like everybody else on the board or commission is. And there may be votes that you have to recuse yourself from or can't vote on. But those are the same rules that everybody on a board or commission follows.
President?
Yes.
I guess I'm also a bit cautious, though. I like the idea of maybe restricting it to certain boards or commissions, whichever is smaller. Like, I don't have a problem with cemetery or historical or anything like that, but I do have a problem with planning and zoning. So we've got, and those are the two things that come to mind readily. So I'm not sure, I can't think of all the commissions and boards right off the top of my head, but whichever one is smaller, is that what we could put in? As, is that something that we could do or not? Because that does bother me. And we just had a case a couple of years ago. So I think that is a very relevant concern.
We could limit this to certain boards and commissions.
For, for employees?
Yeah.
Yes.
Yes, we definitely could.
With respect to the allowing some boards and commissions to have that restriction, I believe that it's been a little while since I've done it, but a while back, I looked through the requirements in the charter for all of the boards and commissions. Some of them had a specific requirement, like I believe planning did. And those that would have, say, a financial, a major financial or some other impact on town business, those would have a statement already there. I don't believe that Historical Cemeteries did, and some of the others that would fall in the category of essentially non-major impact, non-essential town business would, didn't, did not have that requirement in there already.
Thank you.
Rose Mary Eva, 4019 Main Road. Speaking from experience, I have been, I want to say, victim of some litigation within the town, and I would support Councilwoman Ryan's suggestion, particularly about the planning board. There have been, and we've been cautioned on ex parte situations and conversations that may take place. And I think by opening it up to possibly some employees of the town, the productivity comes into play there, too. I mean, just in daily conversation, you may get into some problems, but I would support possibly putting some stipulations on various boards and commissions. Thank you.
Thank you. Renee?
Renee Jones, 161 Highland Road. The EDC is one of, is the commission that really did run into a problem with that. And I would strongly suggest that we keep it as an elector. And I realize it's difficult to get people on the board, believe me, I know. But I think that's the chairperson's responsibility to do that. And I think you need to find qualified people. And I have no problem asking for advice from somebody or having somebody as an advisor. But when it comes time to make a vote, I prefer having them being somebody who's a stakeholder, basically.
Thank you. Anyone else? All right. Article 12. Charter amendment regarding casino gaming revenue. Shall the town charter be amended to allow casino gaming revenue to be used on debt, services, capital development, or infrastructure, and to prohibit its use absent any emergency declared by the town council as an operational budget? This is a very controversial one. But I, I'm sure everybody would like to talk about this. But we do believe that casino revenue can decrease taxes, but there's a smart way to do it, and there's another way to do it. If, if you put it in the, if you rely on this every single budget season as the way you operate, God forbid if something was to happen and the casino was no longer here. Now you have to find that money. And services will be cut. And it's just a dangerous way to operate with this money. Through a lot of discussion, when, when you decrease debt service, you decrease taxes because you're not going to pay those, those payments every year. When you get to buy a fire truck and don't have to take out a loan, then we're not taxing anybody on that. We believe that this money definitely should decrease taxes, but there is, there is a different way to do it. And by, by replacing things that we would normally come to you from capital, and we're not going to tax you, we'll have this money to put into these different funds. I think I can speak with the council that we just felt that it's very dangerous to put it as operational every single year. And it, it's much smarter to pay off our debt, to pay for what we need without taking out loans, to fix things without taxing people to fix things. I don't know if I explained this right. I know Counsel LeBeau has a large opinion about this, but I think I've explained it right.
Madam President?
There's ways to decrease taxes with, there's ways to decrease taxes the smart way. And so we're not going to give it to you to decrease your taxes this year, but we are. We're going to pay off our loans. We're going to buy the fire truck. We're going to buy the plow. What? Maybe. Well, I'm just saying, whatever we need. We're going to buy that plow that, that we can see the ground as the plowers are plowing in the middle of the snow. And we're going to buy the things we need without financing it. And you won't be taxed every single year for five years, 10 years. It'll be just paid for it. So it will decrease taxes. The theory out there is it won't, don't let them fool you. It will decrease taxes. It definitely will. And I hope I'm making sense, and I don't know if any, John, I know that you have an opinion also.
Yeah, I just, I want to add, because the council spent a lot of time on this. And before the council actually took it up, there was a casino subcommittee that looked at this as well, which Counsel Ryan did a great job working on with other members like Counsel LeBeau. I think both Counsel DiMederos and Chabot were part of that. I know the rest of us did also attend the meetings. But the point that I want to make here is that the council spent a lot of time, and we, you know, took a lot of advice from communities that have dealt with these issues in the past. For instance, Lynx... in the past, for instance, Lincoln. And a lot of the feedback that we received from not just Lincoln, but from people who are, you know, fiscally, you know, intelligent when it comes to, you know, handling money, that sort of thing, and, you know, talking with the town treasurer, doing a great deal of analysis, the conclusion that we came to is that this would be the best mechanism to use the casino revenue for. And all this ordinance does is ensures that, or I'm sorry, this charter amendment does is ensures that future councils cannot undo an ordinance and put that casino revenue in jeopardy of being misused through operational accounts, essentially spending money that you don't have. You wouldn't go out and take out a credit card and use that as ordinary income, and that's essentially what this charter change would prevent.
I think we have an opportunity to be very smart with this and pay off our debt and to buy the things we need without going further into debt. And that is why I support this. Deb?
I just want to follow up with Councilor Edwards, just because that was my question. So thank you, you answered it. So the thinking is, I know Lincoln does an ordinance, but the thinking is that it's just easy for every, for a council every two years to undo an ordinance where it's a much greater bar, if you will, to change the charter. Is that, that's kind of what the thinking was?
Correct. Yeah, the whole idea here is that these are the broad categories. Now, within those categories, the council and essentially the voters would have the choice as to what specifically it's spent on.
Right.
But outside of these categories, it's not like we could go and bring in the casino revenue and then turn around and hire nine more firefighters with that money.
Gotcha. So then, you know, whatever, 10 years from now, 12 years from now, when we say, you know what, we've paid off our debt, we've bought everything, we've paved every road, yes, we can still change it and modify it, but it's harder to do, and that's why I'm just trying to, it's harder to do than just changing ordinance.
An ordinance can be changed any time by a council.
And I know the, I know people have the ability to challenge an ordinance, but it's hard, because you have to get so many votes and...
But an ordinance can be changed every week.
Exactly. So that's what I, I appreciate that, because that's kind of what we were saying, is well, why not an ordinance? But thank you.
You're going to need both.
When you guy, when the tax, when this money's properly spent, you're going to see your taxes drop, and your taxes are going to stay down. You're not going to need the revenue, so we're not going to need to tax you. The people are going to decide when it's time to change this money around with a charter change, not with an ordinance change. So we don't want to have a bunch of, a council's...
Be good.
It can change at any point. This council can change. Now locking it this way, we'll have better roads and we'll have lower taxes. We'll have trash pickup, we'll have lower taxes. We'll pay off our debt, $70 million. It's time. So we've got a little golden egg, we've got to use it properly for the next 10 years. And you'll, the townspeople will benefit 100% in this manner.
In my opinion, putting it into operational is irresponsible, because sooner or later it's going to become a problem.
Madam President?
Yes?
I'm sorry, I hate to butt in here, but one more point that I want to make...
No, of course.
Is that what a lot of people don't understand, right, the $3 million number is thrown out there consistently. You know, everybody talks about the $3 million in gaming revenue. Unfortunately, the $3 million in gaming revenue is only guaranteed as a floor through the year 2030, after which time it goes back to our percentage, our percentage, what we would get off of the gaming machines and off the table games. So what this really does is it helps put in a long-term plan in place so that we don't become dependent on $3 million, and then come 2031, all of a sudden, that $3 million payment, if that drops down to $500,000 and you've been using it for operational expenditures, you're in a serious problem, and that's going to jack the tax rates up. So it helps us protect through the initial period of time where we're guaranteed at least $3 million that we're going to be able to spend it on big purchases and, you know, make sure that, you know, all the things that we have essentially not fixed, not replaced, not repaired over the last decade finally get addressed.
And, Madam President, at the, year one, we're going to get 1.1 million in the general fund through tax revenue.
Yes.
So it's not like we're not, our general fund's not going to grow as well. So we've got 1.1 estimated and 3 million for future.
Also, keep in mind, there's going to be a lot of revenue coming from the casino besides this. There's going to be taxes, restaurant taxes, hotel taxes. That all goes into the general fund and will help with taxes. This is different. This is the casino gambling revenue. But there will be an increased revenue in this town just because they're here and because of what's going on in there, three restaurants and all of that. So there will be money from the casino being here that will go into the general fund and will help with taxes. Is that correct?
That's good.
Madam President?
Yes.
So we've got the, we've got the, in the resolution, it's created general categories. I just want to clarify, because I think it's a little bit different. I think it should be a little bit clearer. So I would say, I'm looking at both this number 12 and also the blue part, and I would say, capital, let's see, it may be used for debt service, capital development, comma, infrastructure, or emergency fund, but not, shall not be used in the operating budget of the town. That's in the blue section?
Yeah.
Okay. Because if you look at the number 12 here, it looks like, and to prohibit its use absent an emergency declared by the town council on the operation budget. So I think that it's more, it's clearer the way it's stated in the blue, but I think the, I think the question that goes on the ballot is not so clear, not as clear. And I think we did discuss putting the emergency funding, try to use some of that money at a certain point to kick it up, because that was a 3%, and we talked many times about moving that up.
That's different, though.
Well, that was part of the emergency fund and the reserve fund. What I'm, what I'm saying is that I don't think we, the way it reads here, it looks like we're going to have to, we might use the operation budget if it declares an emergency. And I think the, I think that should be, I don't think that's exactly what you want to say. As far as I can tell, you don't want to call the, because you don't want to put operations if somebody declares an emergency and we can put it into operations.
The clause, absent an emergency declared by the town council's a dependent clause.
Right.
And that's why I set it off with two commas. There's an emergency now. But I could, I could move that phrase to the end of the sentence, and instead of absent, just put unless there is an emergency declared by the town council.
Because we may have to, we may have to use it for...
Operations?
In a real, I'm trying to...
You know, that is really, that concerns me a lot. We have been told from day one, do not use that for operations.
No, no, this is like a declared emergency.
Right.
So this would be a little bit different. Give me an example, someone.
I think it would be, you're talking about a declared state of emergency, which, by the way, is already defined in the charter.
Right.
I mean, it's, and it would be something like, there's an enormous hurricane and our FEMA reimbursement isn't coming until March, but in the meantime, we've got to, you know, we've got to do something about repairing the cafeteria at the school. So we would be able to use that money, knowing we're getting reimbursed for something that, well, maybe a cafeteria is an operation, but you get the...
I'm thinking of, you're on the right track. But suppose we paid all this overtime from our salary account for the police and fire, and all of a sudden, we don't have any more salaries for these guys because we haven't gotten this back from FEMA. We could take this and temporarily put it there until we're reimbursed.
If you have...
Because that would be more operational.
If you put "or" in there for emergency fund, you don't need to do that. You can leave the operations by itself. What people have said is, as soon as you start saying operations is payroll, as soon as you start saying that and say that you're going to hire somebody and call it an emergency, that you're going down the path where you're bringing in pensions, you're bringing in all kinds of stuff. Yeah, you are.
But this is an emergency, a declared state emergency.
All right. I, what I, okay, I object to this. I think that it's fine to do "or" emergency fund, and it still gets to, I think that that solves the problem that you're talking about. If you say debt service, capital development, infrastructure, or emergency fund slash reserve fund, that was in the, that was in the original report that we had done, but shall not be used in the operating budget for the town. That's the operating budget for the town. If there's an emergency, it will go, it will come out of the emergency fund.
The general fund?
No, the emergency fund.
What emergency fund?
Well, that's what I'm saying. We talked about having, we did talk about it. We talked about having buckets. One would be emergency fund slash reserve fund. That is, that is very clearly in the subcommittee final report. It was in, we presented to the town council twice.
But the town council didn't adopt that.
Madam President?
This is what, this is what...
Am I right?
I just, I mean, I appreciate the dialogue back and forth, but I would love to hear from the public if they have any comments on it.
If they have any comments, they can.
And if not, maybe we should move to the next one, and then we can, we can do all of our council stuff back and forth after the public hearings close. Just my thought.
That's fine with me.
So we can move along a little bit faster, because I know some people are going to get hot and want to get out of here.
Does anybody from the audience want to say anything right now? Any comments or questions? Okay, I'll move on and...
Eileen Brown in Fieldstone. I don't have a suggestion, but I think this is a very interesting question, and I'd like to hear some more thought about...
Yeah, we will. We will, once I close. Yes, in front of you. Oh, this is all public. Oh, yeah, tonight.
Oh, okay. I thought you were going to dismiss it and then talk about it some other time.
No, no, this is all public.
Before we go on, I would like to...
Yeah, I just meant the public comment portion of the meeting before.
Yeah.
Yeah. Because we can, you know, we tend to get involved with each other and, you know, start talking about stuffs, and maybe it's a barrier for somebody to, you know, stand up and speak.
I think that the comment about not being part of the operational budget is very clear, and then the question is, what is an emergency and who decides? And then the question, the other question, which I didn't realize, was if we have no reserve fund, should we? If we do not have a reserve fund, should we?
Okay. Does the council move on to question 13, or does anyone want to comment on this before I go forward?
I'd just like to make one more comment on this one in terms of, you know, the debt service is pretty much set. What we have to pay every year for our bonds and our interest is pretty much set. But in terms of capital, while we've talked about doing this, I don't think the intention in this question at all is that the voters won't have an opportunity each year to approve those capital improvements. There's no intention in this ordinance or in this charter proposal that the government will simply spend the money on capital without the voters' approval each year. So I think that that's an important thing to know, that anything that we did for capital improvements would go in front of the voters every year, and you would have a choice to say whether or not you wanted to do that.
Tony, would you like to make a comment about this?
Emergencies?
Yeah, the emergencies.
Under section 408A of the charter, current charter, it states that in the event of an emergency wherein the town council must enact inappropriate ordinance or ordinances, the council may by unanimous vote, unanimous vote, suspend the above provision requiring posting, advertising, and public hearings. The only action by ordinance clearly essential to deal with the emergency shall be taken under such suspension. The ordinance shall contain wording to justify such emergency action. So in order for, if this were voted on, if approved by the council and approved by the voters, the town council would have to enact a, an ordinance.
At the time of the emergency?
Yes. Yes, in order, in order to access these funds.
By unanimous vote.
By unanimous vote, too.
All I was saying is, it was not my understanding that we could, we would enact, we would take out from the operational budget. From the very beginning, it was always keep it separate, do not use it. And we already have, we already have an emergency fund to that answer. It's only going to last for two months, which is why we talked about putting some more money in there, the emergency slash reserve. But I take your point, John, about, you know, letting other people talk, but you asked the question, so.
I think I finally understand what you're saying, because when we originally spoke about this a couple of times, it came up, and the suggestion was that we should have a third bucket for an emergency fund. Yeah, but that, I don't know if that was what we discussed at the ordinance language, but I digress.
Anyone else before I move on? Anyone from the audience before I move on? Charter Amendment Regarding Financial Town Referendum. Excuse me. Shall the town charter be amended to revise budget deadlines for the Financial Town Referendum, FTR? Require the Budget Committee to hold a public hearing. Require the FTR to meet debt service and contractual obligations. Restrict alteration of school budget line items and revenue estimates. Prohibit school, prohibit school committee and council members from submitting individual elector petitions. Increase signatures for elector petitions. Change the form and process for submitting budget options and elector petitions, and make other changes to the FTR provisions in the charter to improve flow and readability of the language. There is a whole section, I believe you all have.
Madam President?
Yes?
Can I just suggest that Counselor Hilton explain some of this, because she was instrumental in drafting some of this language.
Yeah, I don't know if I should give people time to read this a little bit, though. This is pretty in-depth. Do you want to explain some of this, or do you want to?
I'm happy to explain a little. Oh, Bill was going to speak, so come on up, Bill.
Do you know where it is? When you find it, let me know.
Bill Gerlach, 506 King Road. So admittedly, this is my first time seeing it. So could the council just comment briefly about why we're specifically calling out school committee and council members from submitting individual elector petitions and not perhaps the Budget Committee?
Actually, may I answer that one?
Yeah.
I was, when I read this question, I was going to suggest that it be amended, because really, the point of the discussion that we had was that we'd heard quite a bit of feedback that people didn't think it was appropriate that a Budget Committee member produced an elector petition. But then, to be fair, that if you were going to ask, tell one elected body, the Budget Committee, that we restrict them from doing this, that we would do it for all the elected bodies. But the way this question is written, it doesn't, it's not very clear. So actually, I was going to ask the solicitor if that part of the question could be addressed.
I think originally, the budget...
We did talk, the Budget Committee, School Committee. That's why I kind of...
That's what it says in the language. It's just that the question isn't phrased terribly well that way.
Jason Mello, 70, Shannon Avenue. Charter Amendment Three was that town officials and employees may engage in political advocacy activities on their personal time and expense, except in the case of Charter Review Number 13. Why is one, how can we have one and not the other? I'm confused. You're saying that on their own time, they can do whatever they want, they just can't do this?
Well, I'll take a stab at answering that. You know, when you're, when you're elected as part of a body, at the end of the day, even though it's not necessarily written in the charter, we adhere to Robert's Rules and to the spirit of Robert's Rules. And if you sit as a member of an elected body, sometimes you're going to be on the winning side of a vote, and sometimes you're going to be on a losing side of a vote. And you have to accept that. That's part of what being a member of an elected public body is. That doesn't mean on your own personal time, you can't advocate for something else or say, I didn't agree with that, or I wish the vote had gone a different way. But we really got a lot of feedback from people who feel that it's not appropriate for a member of a body that votes on a budget together to say, okay, I wasn't on the winning side of this vote, so now I'm going to go off and do my own thing, particularly as it pertains to the Budget Committee. I mean, I'll be honest, we got a lot of feedback about that. But if you're going to say that to the Budget Committee, to be fair, then, you have to apply that to the other two elected bodies that also are responsible for adopting a budget.
I'm not arguing that portion of it. I'm just, I'm...
So you can ask the, so we'll let the solicitor...
I'm the treasurer at Stonebridge Water Department, so I'm part of an elected body. I understand your point.
Right.
But the point is this, is you have Charter Amendment Number Three. So you're saying as long as they have a shell, if someone comes up with, someone else proposes a budget that someone...
Then they can support that budget.
Then that's totally fine.
They can support that budget.
And I'll let the solicitor answer the question as to whether...
Transparency through obfuscation is what we're going with here.
Well, I'll let, I'll let the solicitor answer the question as far as whether or not he thinks that there's a legal conflict there.
The First Amendment rights are not impaired.
No, again...
It's just when the process, when, when you have this, you have this FTR process, because their members, any members of the, the town council, the school department, budget committee, because of their membership there, they can't put an alternate budget in. They've actually had a chance to do that already through their bodies, but they can discuss it afterwards. There's no conflict between question three and question 13.
They can support an alternate budget.
I, I know I'm not getting to there, but they can, they can advocate. It's just that they can't take part in the official process of putting in an alternate budget.
Well, they can't be the, what, the name.
They can't be the signatory at the bottom.
That's correct, yes.
Exactly.
Okay.
Jerry Larkin, 232 Stony Hall Road. So I have a question, I guess, for the solicitor. This provision would seem, so an elected official has status as an elected official, but they have status as an elector as well, and those should not be mutually exclusive. And so this actually is taking away your rights as an elector, and would it not be therefore unconstitutional?
No.
Okay. You have no other?
He does this once in a while.
You got the, you got, you've got your First Amendment rights. That's the main one.
Right.
You can speak out with whatever you want, but in terms of this process of putting in all of these extra budgets, you don't have the ability to do it when you run for office.
But you're, you're taking away rights from a class so that, you know, all other electors enjoy.
They're not a protected class, so there wouldn't be any 1983 actions.
Okay.
Explain that.
Yeah, maybe you could explain that a little bit more.
Yeah, I know that Jerry didn't.
It's not, when, when you say they're a class of citizens, that's not a protected class.
Okay, but you, but.
It's not discrimination based on a protected class.
But you are, you are, in a sense, disenfranchising electors.
No.
So by prohibiting them from participate, by taking away the rights that other electors in the town have, you're not disenfranchising them?
Well, the other electors, and, and I'm, please, I'm not being facetious, but the other electors in the town don't have a chance to vote on the budget that goes on.
But they're not elected to a body, so.
That's exactly right. But if some, if an elector is elected and has that, that exclusive privilege of voting on the budget that goes on, onto the FTR, that's their participation.
Okay.
Hold on, because they chose to run, some might not want to do that, and then they wouldn't run, and then they would have the ability to get an alternate budget on. So it's kind of a choice. You can't have it both ways. In other words, as I look at this, this is a provision that says you can't have your cake and eat it too.
Could you craft a amendment to the charter that said any elected official cannot vote in the subsequent election as long as they remain in office at the time of that election?
No.
For local officials?
No.
So that's essentially what you're doing with this provision?
No.
Well, I, okay, I respectfully disagree, and I believe it could be challenged.
Here's the, here's the point. You're on a, a board, and I'm assuming you're talking about the member that votes against the budget that gets on to the.
No, I'm, no, I'm saying any member of any of those three bodies that you.
Hold on, that's their participation there. They have a right to vote against that budget when they go into, when they go to vote, so that their rights preserve there. They also have the right to say, you know, I voted against this budget. This is the reason why I voted against this budget. This is why I think you should vote against this budget. So the participation is there all the way down the line, and I don't see that it's being impaired at all. If anything, an elected official that's on those boards has more participation than other electors in town, because they've gone through the entire process. So I don't see this as disenfranchising voters. I don't see this as impairing their ability to participate in any other way, because they're involved, they're involved, they're involved, they're involved, they're involved.
Their involvement is predicated on the fact that they were elected as the officials. So what I'm saying is that you are taking away the rights that they enjoy as an elector, not as a public official. So, so again, you could similarly say, okay, you're elected 2020 for a four-year term. Because you are an elected official, and you have meaningful participation in the governmental process through those four years, you should not have the opportunity to vote in the election in 2022. That's, that's essentially, you know, it's, it's a similar argument, and it brings it, you know, sort of more into relief. And I get that you don't agree with me, but I do believe this could be challenged.
I understand, but all I'm going to say is it's a false analogy.
Okay, I think it's an appropriate analogy, so.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Larkin.
Clearly, our committee has discussed this, because I disagree. I think that the issue that comes in when you're on an elected body is I think there's a propensity to not participate in a manner which you have to convince the others why your budget is the best one, or why you want X and not Z, because you know, all I have to do is wait it out, and I'll just go put my own on. So I think it's, it, when you are an elected group, and you have to respect the will of the majority, whether you like it or not, I think having the ability to then ignore that majority tends to be a disincentive to work and compromise with that majority. So I actually support the change.
Okay, can I just, just to make sure I understand what you're saying. In other words, the real assertion is, is that why even have the vote if everybody can just put, put whatever budget on they want?
Right.
Okay, thank you.
Well, that same thing goes right now, so if the folks at home don't like 13, don't vote for it. It's going, it's going to be up to you. It's going to be on the ballot. If you don't like it, don't vote for it. If you really don't like it, push your people and don't have it pass, and then it won't be on anyway, so. That's just the way it's going to have to work, if it ends up on the ballot, not that I'm saying it will or not.
Thank you, Councilor Lebo. Any other comments from the public regarding this question? Any other comments from the councilors? Councilor Hilton, did you basically, did you run down that this would basically prevent the, I'm sorry, I stepped away, because I've been drinking a lot of water.
I, I didn't, but I, I won't go through everything, but I, I will tell you a little bit about the methodology behind this. So the council had sent some suggestions regarding improving the FTR over to the Charter Review Commission. They declined to bring them forward, but we felt it was worthwhile, in part because the FTR was meant to be an improvement over the financial town meeting to increase participation, which it has. The unintended consequence to the FTR, however, is that it's turning into a legal embrolio on a regular basis. So since the advent of the FTR, and just in, actually, just in the last two years, there have been five separate Newport Superior Court complaints that have been filed over the FTR. There have been four charter complaints. So the thought was, other communities do this, we're not the only ones that have an FTR. There are another 11 communities that have some version of it, if not exactly the same, and they don't seem to run into all these legal battles every year in these charter complaints and lawsuits. So we looked at, first of all, some of the things that have already legally come up, some of these things out of these lawsuits and out of these complaints and, and charter complaints, and looked at those and then memorialized them into the FTR, so that, you know, next time around, it's clear, it's there, this is what was, you know, the final decision in court, or, or however it was decided, so it's in black and white, someone in the future understands it. And then the second thing was, frankly, to look at our fellow communities who have something similar to this, and steal the best ideas that they have. You know, they have a process in many cases that's smoother, that is less legally troublesome, so we took some of the best ideas that we could find from other communities that were doing this and incorporated it here. I do know one of the things that is slightly contentious, and just so that you have the background on it, this, and at some point, if you want a copy, I'll give it to Madam Clerk, has to do with the number of signatures on a elector petition. And this was kind of the start of our research. Currently in Tiverton, it requires 50 signatures to put an elector petition on the ballot. So if you look at the other communities, some of them do it with a fixed number, like we do 50, some of them use a percentage. But if you convert to compare, you know, apples to apples here, Burrville is at the top. That requires 15% of, of the registered voters who voted in their last general election. We're at the bottom. We're not even 1%. We're at, we're not even at half a percent. We're at .39%. So clearly, our bar is a whole lot lower than most other communities, and I think that's because, you know, the citizens have a right to speak out and vote on the budget, and, and to let their voices be heard as far as what they believe is appropriate spending. But it's also a serious thing, and it, it should take some serious thought before, you know, an elector petition goes onto the ballot. So to give you an example, as I said, you know, Burrville's at the top at, at 15%, you know, Portsmouth is at 10%, which is 1,300 signatures for a petition override. The vast majority of them are in the three to five range. The ones in the three to five range are North Smithfield, Warren, Cumberland, Hopkinton, Charlestown, North Kingstown, and Westerly. So we didn't think that being a little bit more in the, the general range was such a, a terrible thing. Tiverton does not always have to be the statistical outlier. A little bit of normal is not a bad thing. So we're proposing the number 200, which still keeps us almost at the very bottom. It, it puts us at 1.5% of the electors in, in town. So we're still way down at the bottom, but it does, I think, put, require a little more thought in terms of getting an elector petition on the budget. It's, it's not a matter of going to just your friends and your, your neighbors who may be hesitant to say, no, I don't want to sign your petition, because, you know, people will just sign, they want to be nice. So it, it will take a little bit of advocacy to get those 200 signatures, but it's certainly not impossible, and we have increased the amount of time that you would have to collect signatures. So that's one part of this I, I did want to clarify. I know that some folks will be a little curious about that. Thank you.
One other thing I want to draw everybody's attention to in this change is the, and you may have already covered this, Councilor Hilton, so stop me if you did, but the restriction on contractual agreement line items in the budget. So it really is, it, it's essentially a change that will prevent somebody with 50 signatures from going forward and shoving the town into bankruptcy, which could be done theoretically under our current structure. So it puts some better guide rails out there and prevents somebody from forcing the town into bankruptcy.
I, I didn't mention it, but by the way, that's one of the good ideas that we stole a number of other communities, make it clear that things that are contractually owed by the municipality, which would result in, you know, a lawsuit or, or significant penalties, cannot be adjusted in a, in a, in a petitioner budget, or even in the budget committees, in either the budget committee's budget, unless it's something that is expiring and they choose not to renew it.
And to put it in terms that I rationalize, if I decide on like what I, what my mortgage payment is, I can't just tell Wells Fargo, good news, I'm not going to pay you, so. Exactly.
Jerry?
So I have a, excuse me, I have another question. On page four of the charter, question 13, paragraph two at the top, cover is the issue of a optional budget submitted by the town council of the school committee. And this question came up before, which is, is either the council or the school committee bound by their proposal to the, okay, because it seems to me that it says, that it is open-ended, and so that either the council or the school committee could put in whatever optional budget they chose to put in. They're not, they could move it up, they could move it down, they could keep it the same.
That's, that's what this language will do.
That was the intention of this language, because the interpretation was different?
It was different before, and it caused problems.
That, that was one. Oh, I know.
Yeah, I know.
That was.
Well, I just thought I'd point that out. I thought I reminded of that.
I guess, actually, since Mr. DeSisto, you're the one that actually interpreted that language to mean that we could not change.
That's why we're changing.
That number. Do you, do you agree with Councilor Hilton and Councilor DiMaderis?
Yes.
That the council and the school committee can modify the number they put in as an optional budget under this section?
Under the, under the change, not under the old one.
Under this section.
Okay.
Proposed language.
Under the proposed language, correct. Okay, thank you.
Not the old language, that's, that's what he's saying.
That was one of those items when I mentioned, we looked at the prior lawsuits and said, okay, how do we need to, or challenges, how do we need to fix it?
Right, well.
Just to be, the one thing to be clear, though, on this, is that the school committee can change the school committee's budget, the council can change the council's budget, but the council can't change.
That seems intuitive, yes.
Right, but the council can't change the school committee's budget or vice versa. But other than that, there are no restrictions on it.
You could sort of try, each of us. It might be interesting.
That's, many more lawsuits if.
Yeah, that'll generate more lawsuits, yeah. All right, thank you.
Donna?
Donna Edwards, 69 South Avenue. So my question is, if, did you consider putting something in the charter that if there isn't a petitioner's budget, that the budget that the budget committee proposed should automatically pass, there is no way to vote no in an FTR?
Without a referendum, without the FTR.
Correct. So we spend thousands of dollars to have one person basically walk in and vote yes. So that, to me, that's a waste of money.
The town clerk wants to say something.
You would still have resolutions, so you would still have to have the FTR.
Oh.
Even for the one vote. But if, I see what Donna's saying, why go through it?
It's thousands of dollars.
But you wouldn't, you might have resolutions, right?
Right, if there weren't resolutions, but that would be, that would always have, there'd always be resolutions, there has to be.
Okay.
Yeah, thank you.
May I add?
Yeah, Donna, Trish, Trish wanted to answer you in some way, too.
Whether or not Tiverton is ready to go there or not, just so that folks know, of the other communities that have some sort of FTR-type thing, there are only three of us that have an annual FTR every year. In some, all the other communities, it's an FTR override, meaning if there's no petitioner's budget, they don't hold an FTR. Now, they might have a petitioner's budget every year, I don't really know, and I don't really know what they do about referendum questions. And I'm not really sure for this, you know, Charter Review Commission, whether or not that's a too big a step yet, but it is interesting that other communities use this when they need it and don't necessarily have it if there's not a petitioner's budget that comes for it. On the other hand, they also have some other steps that often happen before that there's a petitioner's budget, too, just for information.
Madam President, one more thing, I just want to piggyback on that.
Okay, go ahead.
I apologize.
Diane, one second.
So the one thing I will add as well is that this is stuff that the Charter Review Commission should have looked at when it was submitted by the council eons ago, and they chose not to do it, so that's why we had to pick it up and take another hard look at it. So we probably could have included some of those provisions and looked at the resolutions and that sort of thing, but unfortunately, by the time we got to where we are in this process, the Charter Review Commission hadn't done their job, they hadn't looked at this. And so in order for us to take a look at these things, we had to pick it up, and we had a very short window in order to meet the deadlines to get these items on the ballot. So that's why we, you know, were able to luckily put together something I think that is a vast improvement over what we had prior, but it's not the penultimate method of government.
Diane?
Diane Farnworth, Pecassid Avenue, and I'm here individually, not in any official capacity. Make sure that's noted.
Look right at that.
Really don't want another charter complaint.
Oh, go ahead.
Two things. First of all, to Councilor Edwards' statements, we've been going through this process for a year. This council's been aware. This council's been aware of it for a year. So to say that it's the Charter Commission's fault that really no other grand options were considered or on the table, I'm not really sure if that's accurate. I think that we've had more than enough time to consider perhaps moving to a model such as Portsmouth's or one of the other towns. Secondly, I don't think 200 signatures is going to make one bit of difference. It may preclude people from going to the next-door neighbors, but it won't stop them from going on Facebook saying, "Hey, meet me at Little Bear."
Right.
It's not going to make one hell of a difference. I really do see us continuing to struggle financially to run this town. You know, thankfully, we have the casino where we may be able to invest in infrastructure, but I still think that some of the underlying issues we have with keeping people here are going to continue, and we're going to continue to have alternate budgets presented every year that slash us to the bone. Thank you.
Thank you.
One item I do want to add, we did send exactly the Portsmouth language to the Charter Review Commission. They chose to throw it away. And we didn't want to, and again, we don't want to get into Charter violations either because they, you know, like to do that stuff.
All right, let's go on without any, go ahead.
Madam President, David Holmes, Main Road. There are approximately, how many qualified voters in Tiverton?
Nancy, 10. 12,000?
12,000, 13,000.
12 to 13,000. 10 percent of that would be 1,200, give or take. That at a minimum is what you should consider for a petition to change the budget. Those people in the Budget Committee have spent a year working hard with a lot of hassles, and then to have some Joe Blow schmuck come up and say, "Sign this, sign this," get a few votes, our petition, signatures, and throw in a budget that strips what they have done, it's ridiculous.
Thank you. Thank you.
Kelly? Kelly LeVack, Crandall Road. Just as a point of clarification, I did attend many of the Charter Review meetings. They did investigate this in depth. Stephen Clark actually did. He had charts, he had everything. I think their point of looking at it is very different than the point of what you are all looking at. And of course, their recommendation for petitioner's signatures is 28, to lower it to 28, not to increase it in any way.
Yeah, they wanted 28 signatures, that's what they came to us with.
But they did do some homework as well.
Anyone else? Anyone else? That is true. One of the 20 was that they wanted to reduce the signatures to 28 signatures. And there was a whole analysis somewhere.
Only get three a day.
Yeah, right, that's right. Anyone else?
I actually do think it should be a percentage of the people, the qualified people that voted in the year before, and I think we should go for the higher bar than even 200. I think it's reasonable, if you're going to be doing something that requires, you know, a budget, a municipal budget, that you should have enough people that are on board to do it.
Thank you. Anyone else on this question? Anyone else want to comment on any of the other questions? Go back to some, any of the others. Any questions, comments?
Going back to the question of electors in boards and commissions, I did go back and look at the charter, current charter terms. And the ones that I would consider, like Planning Board, as being essential to the town business, do specifically state electors. The others that would not be considered essential to town business by most people did not have that as a provision. So I would recommend that that one sentence be stricken and that the other wording for each individual board or commission be the wording that governs who can be a member and who can't.
And I have to say, I did the same thing that you did, and I noticed that the Planning Board and the Zoning Board specifically say electors of the town.
Yes, correct.
And the other boards and commissions don't have that phrase. However, Section 1011 of the Charter, General Qualifications, states that no members of boards or commissions as listed in this charter, in this charter, shall be elected officials or employees of the town of Tiverton.
Correct.
So there's the general provision in there, and what it does is it captures all of those boards and commissions that are listed in the charter. Those boards and commissions that are not listed in the charter are not subject to that requirement.
Correct, but Historical Cemeteries Commission is listed in the charter.
I know, yeah.
So that's, that's my point, is that this is what I would consider to be an unreasonable requirement, and that there's simple addition or deletions to the wording or modifications to the wording could solve the problem without a bit of trouble.
Thank you.
So since my board isn't in the charter, that means I can get anybody?
Well, you're not subject to Section 1011.
Yeah, oh, good. Okay. I came up.
Don't go that far, we're going to have to look into that.
I came up to ask you on question six, you have a 55 percent supermajority vote. Can you explain what a supermajority is? Because the budget, the Charter Review had just a majority vote, 55 percent majority. So what's the difference between a supermajority and a majority?
I'm just reading, I'm just. Tony? Let me just read this.
It's really super. That phrase was put in for the 55 percent, just to denote the fact that it's not a straight majority. So the modifier "super" was put on the front of majority to reflect the fact that it's 55 percent.
Explain it again.
What's the difference between a majority and a supermajority?
A majority is.
If you're meeting 55 percent.
Majority is 50 percent plus one. 55 percent represents a supermajority.
I get it.
Okay, all right.
Lawreese.
Highly technical, very lawreese, what can I say?
Anyone else on any of the other questions? One last chance, everyone. Anyone else have any comments? All right, at this time, I'll quote, oh, sorry, sorry, sorry.
David Holmes, Main Road. On question two, there was discussion on having a limit on contracts. There really should be a limit, because if you had a particular council that, or whoever granted the contract and really liked the person, they could write them a contract for 17 years or whatever, and unless you take them to task, they're there. So being able to extend the contract limit of what you had is a good idea, but you really ought to have a limit to how far it can go, just to protect yourselves.
Do you want to comment on that? No?
That's a straight.
Anyone else? Anyone else? Okay, at this time, I'd like to close the public hearing.
Madam President.
Now, my plan from, yeah, you're ready, aren't you?
I am ready.
Yeah, I know, but I'm, my plan is, what we have to do is decide which ones are going up.
I was, I was just going to comment that I intend to only support five going forward to the ballot, so.
Okay. And I'm sure you have five in mind?
I do.
Okay. Anyone else? Any of the councillors want to talk about, well, let's look at, I'm just going to go down. One, does anyone, any of the councillors want to talk any further on this one?
Madam President?
Yes.
Given that I only intend to search for five going forward, I think this one would be superfluous to those other five.
Did you have a microphone?
Yes. Hey, maybe we're going to get really close. Sorry, no, I said, given that I only intend to support five, I believe that number one would be superfluous to those other five, and so if we had to drop an amendment, this would be one of them, in my opinion.
Madam President?
Yes.
Actually, surprising, I have five also that I want to, because I don't, I think 13 is too much on the ballot, so I was going through everything that I thought was superfluous, not needed already in the town charter, or had so many, so many ifs, ands, and buts in it that who knows what that would, it wasn't a yes/no question. So I also think number one, that would be superfluous to me.
Anyone else on one? Joan? Oh, you don't even have a microphone over there.
That's why Joan's been so quiet.
That's why I don't comment.
You could have bowled it.
So, so, did you go over that, this question one didn't include the senior center director?
Oh, yes, the editor, yeah, we, that would have been striking the revised language under senior center director when we moved it from where it was to, yeah.
Okay. I just was questioning.
Yeah, that was included, yes.
That came up, because I wasn't here. Thank you. So one question, are we going to go through possible changes, or at this point are we just deciding which five, or whatever you decide to have as the maximum number?
No, I think we're just going to, we only, the two councillors don't want this question. Is there any, anyone who has any discussion regarding this? I think this is an important question, I don't know if it's one, I wasn't thinking five, I don't know if it's one of my top five, but this was one that we suggested, by the way, guys, that we sent to the Charter Commission, because we were told by past town administrators and as a council that it's been very restrictive, this charter, regarding these positions, and that's much easier to, to really create a job for what we need without having it so specific in the charter.
Madam President, yeah, I remember that discussion, but I also thought what we were trying to do was keep those specifics to contracts, and that's where we would be able to be specific on it.
Right, so we take it out of here. So we take the language out of here and we put it in the contract.
Yeah, so I don't think, I don't, well, I just actually don't think we need to do it. I just think, I think there are others that are more important.
Now, go ahead, Trish. Just one comment. I'm not sure that I'm, I think 13 is too many, but I'm not sure that I'm married to the idea of five. It's a long time in between addressing the charter, and I think that there are some things in here above five that have real merit, so I'd, I'd be willing to go above five. I'm not.
You might be able to sell me on seven.
Well, I, me personally, I think we should go through the ones that we think are, okay, this is a must-have, and then see what that number is.
So, Madam President.
All right, so, John, tell us your must-haves.
For me, if I was going to pick five, my top five would be number eight, number nine, number 10, number 12, and number 13.
Go slower.
Sorry.
Jesus.
Number eight, which would be the hiring duties, transferring those for part-time employees to the administrator. Number nine, which would be the changes, of course, because there's a lot, a few of those that we need to make. Number 10, we all know what number 10 is, and then.
The land use difference.
Yeah, the land use thing. And then number 12, which would be the ordinances that pertains to the gaming revenue. And then number 13, which would be the amendments to the FTR, although based on public comment, I would like to see the number of signatures go up.
And I, I think before I would vote for 12, we have to talk about changing that language at the end a little bit, about the emergency.
That also, but conceptually, those are.
Does any, does anyone else want to tell me your priorities?
Madam President, I got two to go with John's.
Okay.
12 and 13?
Mine were 2, 6, 7, 9, and 12. So 9 and 12, I thought.
And not 13?
Pardon? 2, 6, 7, 9, and 12. No, and again, it's not because I don't agree with some of the stuff, number 13, I just think it's unruly, so I think that.
Well, we could change that. We could make the language better.
But, but the thing is, there's, there are about, this is one of those ones, there's about 10 different, different things in there that anybody could, because if you want to do this on a ballot, it's going to be a yes/no. So it's like, I could say, "Okay, I agree with this, but ha-ha, I don't agree with that." And so the whole thing goes off. So I think, I'm not, and I don't know how to rewrite this, like, tonight, to get this, you know, because there's so many things it covers. And I think that was the problem I had with others, that, and, well, I might as well say one other thing, there are already stipulations in the town charter that the town can change employees' job descriptions, they can, they can change departments, they can already do that. So I don't think we need another, yeah, I don't think we need another charter resolution if it's already given to the town council, that we have that power to do it. So that's, that was another reason why I said no.
See who's talking.
All right, so.
I have 2, 5, 7, 8, 9, 12.
This is what I think we should do, because this is going to last all night, and I'm dying of heat exhaustion up here. So what we're going to do is, we're going to, I'm going to call for a vote on one. Does anyone want to make a vote to either reject one or to accept one? Is that, John, what's up?
Oh, nothing, sorry.
Okay. So does anyone want to make a vote to reject or accept? Number one.
I'll make a move to reject, number one.
Do I have a second? Okay. Motion's been made in second. Any further discussion? All those in favor to reject one? Unanimous.
See you later.
You convinced me. Number two, vacancies of elected positions. Anyone want to make a motion for or against?
I'll make a motion for, number two.
I have a second. You said four.
For number two. He wants number two to go to the ballot.
I want number 42.
I, I, second.
Okay. Any discussion regarding this? All those in favor to go with number two to the ballot? 1, 2, 3, 4, 2 against.
So number two goes?
Number two goes to the ballot?
To the ballot.
Yes.
Goes to the ballot?
Yes.
Was it 5 to 2, 4 to 2?
That was a, there's not 5, there's not 7 here, so it's 4 to 2. That's okay. Yeah, the heat's getting to me, too. Now, once we count how many, then we might want to tweak this number also.
Well, we can be able to pull stuff off. Somebody have to bring it back up for reconsideration.
Yes, someone will have to bring it back up for reconsideration, once we see what it is. Okay, char, number three, and that's the one advocacy by town officials. Anybody want to, for or against that one?
I make a motion to move question three forward.
Question three forward. Do I have a second?
Sorry, I make a motion to move the question three forward.
I will second that. Motion's been made in second for number three. All those in favor? Discussion, I'm sorry, Joan.
Just a couple of questions on this, and it may have been discussed before. In Section A, it refers to town property, and.
In section A, it refers to town property, and what defines town property? Is that the physical location? And I know we put signs at the polling stations and stuff, and that is town property.
But I think that's okay, according to the election rules.
Okay, thank you, and in section B, where it says, where the expression does not use town resources, does that mean resources refer to town property, goods, money, grants, or labor? I just want to get the definition.
Where are you, Joan, I'm sorry?
At the, the last sentence, the last.
On what page?
That's, that would be on page one.
Question three.
Yeah, oh, I thought you were looking at this, Joan.
And Joan, that's the last sentence?
Yep.
Town resources would include any property tangible, intangible, for the town, which would include town funds also.
So that would be goods, money, grants, labor?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
I think this is a real important one, this is where we've run into a lot of charter complaints.
Madam President?
Yes.
This is one of the ones I was kinda torn on, I think.
I think this was one of your favorites.
I think I'm gonna, no, this one? No, it wasn't, I think I'm gonna, I am gonna vote to support this one, and if we have to pare it down, it'll, you know, this would be one of the ones that would come up, I think.
Okay, so I have a motion, and a second, any further discussion? You, you can't hear, John, is that what's wrong? I'm really sorry, um, Joan, I don't know why they can't hear you, your voice is usually...
So, all I said was that, you know, I, I would support this one in particular, but I think that if we wind up with too many, I would call it back up for reconsideration, so, makes, it makes it through round one, but we'll see if it advances to the finals.
Okay, so let me just clarify this, then, so we're, we may be doing this in rounds, then, yes, is this what you're saying, Joan?
That, that's the take that I had, that I, that's what I got from this initial discussion here, when we were doing these votes.
Okay, all right, just to clarify, all right.
Well, I think what I'm gonna do, honestly, is I'm gonna tell you all, the ones that we all voted to pass forward, and then I'm gonna call a vote, and if it's nine, I'm gonna call a vote that we pass those nine. If, if I don't get yes for that, then we have to go back to the drawing board, that's how I'm gonna do it, that is the only way, we're not gonna get out of here by midnight.
So we're in the final four right now, is what you're telling me? All right, love it.
Okay, so motion's been made in second to send number three to the ballot, all those in favor? Against? Five, one. Charter amendments regarding charter complaints.
Madam President?
Yes.
Motion to reject.
Second.
Reject.
Reject.
I guess you guys can hear me more than John, which is very odd, usually John, you can hear better, there's a motion to reject, okay? And I have a second, any further discussion on that? All those in favor? Wait, go ahead.
I was only gonna say that I'm, I'm not gonna vote to reject this one, I think that the absolute chaos and bedlam of what happens when a charter complaint comes in, and the situation in the town clerk's office is, it, it's just, it's irresponsible to let it continue like that, and so I feel really strongly that this is a, you know, in, a much clearer, cleaner way to deal with charter complaints, rather than first of all, put the town clerk, who's not an attorney, in the position of having to determine whether or not something is legally set forth, and having her investigation questioned, and I say this because as part of the research on the FTR, I went back and read through the minutes of every single one of these charter complaints, holy guacamole, it's like a kangaroo court, and then, you know, and then, and then off it goes to the council, and then it, you know, takes on political tones, or even if it doesn't, people accuse it of taking on political tones, I feel really strongly that this is a much better, cleaner situation, which will have better, fairer outcomes in the, in the long run, and be much fairer to our town clerk.
I agree with Trish, and this was something that Nancy brought to the Charter Commission, because she wanted the charter complaints cleared up on the procedure, and I've been present, and so has Joan, through many of the charter complaints, and it is, it is bedlam, it's, it's very difficult to get through how it's presently written in the charter, and this makes it much more clear, and like I said, the lawyer will be making a non-political decision on whether this has merit, and, and not an elected official.
Madam President?
Yes.
I withdraw my motion. Y'all sold me on it, good job.
Um, anyone else?
Madam President?
Yes.
It has absolutely nothing to do with our present town solicitor, but the reason I object is that this is not independent, and I understand that Nancy has a problem, and I'm not saying that this is the best solution, but I also know that there are certain, I have no doubt that there are certain town council members, town employees, town officials, who would go and, and interfere, or attempt to interfere, and that's got, and I'm not saying anything, I'm not naming any names, I'm not saying anybody on this council, I'm, I'm just saying that you've got to protect the independents, and as much as Nancy, you know, I know it's difficult, but she takes it, and she brings it to the, the town solicitor, who I happen to think is a good one, but it's like, I also know that, that doesn't always happen, so for that reason, that's why I'm, I'm against her. And again, nothing, nothing, absolutely nothing against you.
Okay, so, um, does anyone want to make?
Madam President?
John reverses motion, so John.
Wait, 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 John, no. I move that we move question four to the ballot, second.
There we go. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Against? Four, two. That one's going. Board members, well, stop it, board membership, would anyone like to read?
Madam President? Motion to reject.
Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Any further discussion?
It's just that if we have to prioritize things, it, I'd like to do it, but, you know, if we can't take all thirteen, this wouldn't be at the top of my list.
At this rate, we're looking at twelve, so.
Motion's been made, and second to reject, does everyone hear? Yeah, okay, motion's been made, and seconded, any further discussion? All those in favor to reject fi, uh, five?
To reject which one?
Number five.
Five.
Yeah.
Okay, we did good.
Was that five, one?
No, nobody filed a file. Recall petition.
Madam President?
Yes.
Motion to reject.
Second, don't change your mind.
Not going to. We gotta get, we gotta narrow this list.
Motion, yeah, um, this probably wouldn't be my priority either, but there's a motion in the second to reject, any, any further discussion?
Yeah, just one, one comment.
Yep.
Certainly, I think this process makes it clearer as to how the recall process works, I think it's, it's a good idea, it closes out recall petitions that were taken out in the past, it gives an end to it, it gives structure around it, I think it's, it's a good idea for, since we've had recall petitions, but they've gone nowhere, I think this puts a little bit more structure around it, and I think it's, it's valuable, thank you.
You're welcome, anyone else?
I actually, I actually agree, I think it's, I think it's, it's much clearer and much cleaner than the one that we have, I'm not sure where I rank it, but I kind of do wish this one would, would go forward.
Any further discussion? I have a motion and a second to reject, number six, all those in favor? Against? Motion fails. Now I need a new motion. So I need a motion to, you know what I'm saying? Because it failed.
I make a motion to move forward with valid question six.
I'll second. Any further discussion? Motion's been made in second to go forward with question six, all those in favor? Against? Motion fails, so it doesn't move forward. That's what Tony's telling me, I asked him, if anybody wants to question that, because I wasn't.
It's a, it's a three to three vote.
Right, so, no.
No.
No. No, because, no, because there isn't, there was never one to move forward. Do you see what we're saying? Yeah, okay. I had to think about it, but I think Tony's right, for change, no. Yes. Okay. Seven, town treasurer and town clerk receiving health benefits.
Madam President, I'll make a motion to move number seven forward.
Second.
Motion been made in second, any further discussion?
Actually, I, I think if the town treasurer, or town treasurer in the future, were to get health benefits, it's already covered in, or such other position approved at a financial town referendum, so I don't, I think this is, is not really needed, because it's already, if, if they, if the town treasurer wanted health insurance, they could get it with the current wording, that's just my opinion.
Tony?
Lawyer, talk to us.
We didn't hear you, John.
How can nobody hear me? It's super loud out there.
There's some, he's, you're muffled or something.
She's right.
Are you on?
Wait a minute, I didn't hear that, Tony.
Say it again, nice and loud, Tony. She's right.
So.
Thank you, Tony.
All right, well, let's, um.
I'll make a motion to reject seven.
Wait a minute, Trish is gonna, Trish will have to.
Either withdraw or modify or something.
Withdraw her motion, or modify her motion.
Okay, so to clarify, while the town clerk right now is eligible to participate in health and dental benefits, there is existing language that will give the town treasurer, who is also a full-time, I mean, elected employee, exactly the same rights, provided it's adopted in the next FTR?
No.
No, that's not what they, they said it was already on the record, that she gets it, because.
No, 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 but doesn't it say something about, didn't?
It don't, go ahead, go ahead, Joan.
Sorry, it, it does say, we live in a position of town clerk, or such other positions approved by a financial town referendum, so if, if the treasurer, health insurance is included in the budget, then it's automatically approved.
That's exactly what I'm saying, if it, so, as approved, so if it wasn't approved in the FTR this year, then it would have to come up for next year.
Right, correct, yes, right.
Madam President, so in the, so we're saying that, the budget committee could pull it out at some point, and say they're not gonna get it, because if that's the case, then we gotta approve this, so she.
No, 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 we're saying, yes, I guess you are right, but it, we will, if it, if we, if a treasurer gets elected that wants health insurance, we put it in the budget, go to the budget committee and say, we have a full-time employee that, that, that wants health insurance, and I think the budget committee would have a hard time saying no to that.
But if we put it in the charter, they can't say no.
If we put it in the charter, they can't say no, is that true, Tony? Joan, do you have a comment on that one?
No, actually, I have to say, I do, I do agree with, with Joan on this one, because we're just adding that in, Joan's point was, the existing languages are such other positions, adding on, and the town treasurer, it would be superfluous, because no matter what, it has to be approved by the financial town referendum, so Joan's point is, the language is, is surplusage.
In that case, Madam President, I'll withdraw my motion.
Now somebody can make a motion to reject.
Okay, I'll make a motion to reject seven.
Second.
Okay, so motion been made in seconded, any further discussion? All those in favor? Unanimous, oh, I believe it was unanimous, yeah, it was unanimous, what? Randy, John?
Six, all right.
Number eight. Would anybody like to?
I'll make a motion to approve eight.
Second. Did y'all hear me on that one?
I, I have a motion and a second, any discussion?
Yes, I do have one, I think a correction, under duties and responsibilities, under A, at the, second to the last sentence, where it says, the position shall be advertised in at least two newspapers available locally, specific application procedures shall be listed in the advertisement, if you look at the current town charter, that was amended at the previous election. We'll get there.
So it was, it was amended to what, Joan?
It was amended to, say, the personnel board may develop a method for advertising vacant municipal positions.
She's right again. Get him, Joan.
No, okay, so wait, 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 so how does that? Okay.
What, what needs to be done, frankly, I was using an old charter on this, so you're correct, I'll just make that amendment to include the language in the current charter that was approved in 2016.
Okay. So I have a motion and a second still to approve.
Madam President?
Yes.
Okay, the motion was to approve this, correct?
Correct.
Okay, I guess the problem I have with this is the previous town administrators that we have had, and we would give ability, God forbid if we should have another one like that, but we give them, that town administrator has the total ability to, to hire these people without going through a personnel board?
Yes, because these are positions that we need quickly, with, and the personnel process is long.
Well, I, I thought the personnel, no, I understand, but I thought they were going to change, because I think it's like changing, if you change the process, if the personnel board can go, can move it up.
It still takes a while, because they have to go through all the applications, and they have to do their own interviews, and it goes to the town administrator, by this time, suppose it's something that we need in right away.
I still think the process could go through the personnel, I'm just, and again, I'll say again, it's nothing to do with you, it has to do with previous town administrators.
But it's just for part-time help, it takes forever to get them.
Part, part-time and seasonal.
I know, okay, I, I just, I don't want to have, I don't want to give that authority to somebody who was so horrible.
I still like you, Jan.
What is that? Uh, no, not, not Jan.
But, but see, we lose applicant slate for lifeguards and all of that, because by the time the process goes forward, someone, another town has hired them.
Then we don't get the lifeguards.
And then we don't get the seasonal help we need, or we don't get the part-time help we need, as quickly as we need it.
One of the things that the.
I mean, I think we have to trust the person we hire.
Well, we did before, and it was, it was not good, but I think, one of the things that police and the fire department have done, and I think another department, is get a list of people who have already been vetted, I mean, it's not an impossible thing, I just don't, I just, I'm, I'm leery of putting all power into one person, especially when it has been so disastrous for the town, so that's my opinion.
Any other, anyone else? Okay, so I have a motion for it to go forward?
Correct.
Sorry, I'm getting really hot up here.
I got you.
Motion to go forward in the second, any further discussion? All those in favor? Five, against? Number nine is the changes.
Nine.
Now I'm getting lost.
Why? You usually don't get lost.
I got you, I'm back on track, we're good.
Okay, nine, the changes. Do I have a motion to?
So moved to approve.
Do I have a second? Any, any further discussion on this?
That's all housekeeping stuff, basically, correct.
That's all housekeeping stuff. Motion's been made in second, any further discussion? All those in favor? All those in favor? Against, one. Five, one. I keep wanting to say six.
I vote Joe's proxy, so I count as two.
The land use department.
Madam President?
Yes.
Motion to approve.
Motion made in second to approve the land use department. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Three against? Okay. Three. So I need another motion?
No, now it fails. If your motion is to reject...
Oh, to reject, I get... Yeah.
It's failed, but it's in limbo, but if it's a motion to approve, it fails.
But this is a policy that's already being done.
Correct.
Okay.
I guess I see the logic in that.
All right. So ten failed, is that what you're saying?
Ten failed. Madam President, number eleven?
Yes.
Motion to reject.
Second.
Any further discussion?
Although... Oh, hang on, I will say, I'm going to make one more plea for this. I think that although I would be willing to consider removing the two boards that have some quasi-judicial power, like the planning board and the zoning board, but I think the idea that you can't be a teacher, or a fireman, or a policeman in this town, and serve on the historical cemeteries commission, or the arts commission, or any of those things, is overly restrictive. We need volunteers. We need more volunteers. I do think that there are plenty of regulations in place between the ethics commission and the town administrator, and finally, the council, who appoints to make sure that there's not going to be a conflict of interest. And I just think that there's a large group of people that were... Who are, you know, to go to the question, electors, who are excluding from participating. Again, I do understand, I... With the planning board and the zoning board, where, you know, in those cases, there's probably too many conflicts of interest, excluding those two boards and commissions, but, I mean, I think otherwise, it's something that we should consider, especially given our volunteer shortage.
Madam President?
Yes.
Again, not that I disagree that this is not... This is... I think that this would be a good thing, but there was a lot of questions about what, you know, we could do here from the public. It's certainly something we should take up at a future charter review. And it just... It got a check minus from me, so that's my method of how I'm tracking which ones I like.
Madam President?
Yes.
I've been in this town fifty-six years, and I don't want an outsider coming in deciding on how or what, or who does anything unless they are a town resident. I don't think the people would... The people of Tiverton will not approve this. I think it'll be a waste of time putting it on the ballot. And we got plenty of good people in this town. They'll step up if asked.
All right, so I have a motion to...
Madam President?
Oh, I'm sorry, Joan.
Get 'em, Joan.
You're way over there. I just like...
Just for clarification, this is saying they're electors, and if the employee is an elector of the town, they can serve on a board. It's not saying that any employee, and they could live out of town, can serve on a board. It's just, it's saying electors.
Yes.
If that's the case, I'm okay with that. I don't want anybody from another town, Fall River, Westport, Dartmouth, Newport...
No, 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 these are town employees that live here.
There are town employees that live here, but they choose not to vote. Is that what we're saying? That's what I heard earlier?
No, 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 they're electors. They choose to vote.
There's a restriction right now that says, if you are an employee, you live in Tiverton, you're a Tiverton resident, and you're... And you happen to be an employee, you cannot be on a board... Volunteer Board or Commission. And this would take that away, although I would be willing to amend this to exclude the planning and zoning board, because potentially, there's a place where there could be conflict, but... So if you...
So I was understanding it wrong. Earlier on, I heard people saying that they want them if they're from Westport or Fall River.
No, 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 that's not what this one says.
That's not this one?
These are Tiverton residents.
Okay, so long as it's Tiverton residents, I change my mind.
Madam President, I withdraw my motion.
Madam President, can I just explain a little bit further on this?
Sure, go ahead.
So I did look at the charter, and basically, the concern for the public was they didn't want non-electors being on the planning and zoning board. And that's specific in each of those sections of the charter. So if the concern is planning and zoning, it already has the restriction that you must be an elector of the town. It doesn't have that in the other boards and commissions. It does have under recreation, where it says recreation, it specifically excludes employees. So I'm concerned about that. If this was to pass, it would also need to change recreation to not have that exclusion for employees. The purpose of this was to say, if you're an elector, and you also happen to be an employee of the town, then you could serve on a board or commission, with the exception... No, actually, you could serve... Because it says electors, you could serve on any of the boards or commissions. The discussion with the public, the public wanted to change electors to be residents. So you could in fact change... That's...
Yeah, but they also wanted, even if they were non-residents, they could do it. That's what the cemetery... Right, the cemetery commission was saying. Susan's, yes. Yeah. That's what they were saying, that they wanted it to be non-residents.
Oh, that's not... That's not good.
All right, yeah.
I'd be in favor of changing this to residents.
Okay.
Madam President?
And we would have the coverage on the planning and the zoning to be... They have to be electors.
Just to clarify, though, section 110 right now says, "Members of boards, committees, or commissions must be electors of the town of Tiverton." So that says, everybody who's on a board or commission has to be an elector. Then it says, "No members of boards or commissions as listed in this charter shall be elected officials or employees of the town of Tiverton, except as provided in section 1213." So you already have to be an elector. You can't be an employee and not an elector and be on a board or commission. I'm okay with it not having elected people be on board... Boards of commissions, but... I don't know. I'm... I just don't...
I don't know what everyone's...
I just think this isn't one of my priorities. I don't know. Anyone else? No, I have a motion, don't I, on this one?
I withdrew it, but I... The one last thing I would say is that, you know, hopefully now, if this moves forward and this passes, there's, you know, tons of history teachers in town, so maybe they'll jump on the historic cemetery.
There's no motion.
I withdrew my motion, so if you feel free to make one.
May I make a motion to send this one forward, but to include language that excludes the planning board and the zoning board?
Second.
Any further discussion? Yeah, that's what I wanted Joan to say.
No, it doesn't say... It says electors, but no, because we're not talking about electors. We're talking about employees, right?
Yeah.
Talking about employees.
But the planning board and the zoning board don't say anything about employees. They only say things about electors.
Correct, and recreation specifically excludes... Recreation specifically excludes employees.
Right. Well, should we... Maybe that was for a reason, so should we leave those...
I don't know why recreation would be for a reason. I have a problem...
Talk to us, Nancy. Give us the history. We need something.
I had a member that worked for the DPW. I'm sure you remember this. He worked for the DPW, and he was on the recreation commission, doing a great job, but somewhere, someone decided, no, we didn't want our employees on that. And it's unfortunate, because...
There was really no real reason for it, but...
But that's how it came to the DPW. That was specific for a specific issue.
Councilwoman Hilton, will you amend your motion?
Rosemary, are you saying no, or...
To remove the recreation...
Yeah.
All right, go ahead.
So let me amend my motion that would allow employees who are also electors of the town of Tiverton to serve on volunteer boards and commissions, subject to the no conflict of interest, all the ethics regulations, approval by the town administrator, the town council, excepting for the planning board and the zoning board.
This change would remove it from...
Do you have that?
This change would remove the recreation committee restriction? Okay.
Yeah, that would mean it could be on recreation. If Jan and the council thought it was okay.
Love it.
Well, we have to point them anyway. All right. So that's the motion. I have a second.
Yeah, you know, my second is still there.
Okay. Motion made in second. All those in favor?
That was a lot of debate for nothing.
Well...
It wasn't for nothing.
It's still passed.
I don't want somebody from Westport coming to tell me what I'm doing.
I don't disagree with you, Randy. I don't disagree. Number twelve.
I just want to make it clear that people in Tiverton like people from Westport, and we have nothing against them.
Yeah, but not making our rules.
Okay. All right, casino gaming revenue.
Madam President, motion to move this forward?
To move forward?
Correct. Second.
Discussion?
Madam President?
Yeah, I was going to say something, but go ahead. No, I was going to say, I think we should take the emergency... Take it away... The end of it. So I think we should say gaming revenue to be used on debt, capital development, infrastructure, and to prohibit its use on the operational budget.
Got it.
I don't know if you all agree. It's just because of that emerg... Because we have the ability to do this unanimously and take from the general fund. We... In a huge emergency, in...
In theory, couldn't we get this money? If we had an emergency?
In theory, not if we restrict it the way we do. No, we couldn't get this money in an emergency.
We don't need to get it.
So you said the debt service, capital development...
It would be everything, except just take out emergency declared by the town council. You know what I'm saying? So it would be... And to prohibit its use on the operation budget. So you're going to take out absent in emergency.
So did that work?
Correct.
That was... That worked with what you were talking about?
Oh, I didn't know you guys talked about it. It just... Yeah, because you...
Yeah, well, now I've got all scratch marks.
Well, I do understand what you were saying, and you convinced me.
Okay.
So if we take... It was my idea to take that out. I do have a motion on the floor to approve the entire thing. I don't know if anyone agrees with it.
Madam President, I want to accept your amendment to my motion.
You want to?
And I'll second.
Okay. John, you are coming in so muffled, I can barely hear you. Okay.
It's super loud out there. I don't know what the problem is.
I know, I don't know.
It's not down here.
To answer Councilwoman Ryan's question... This... The council already has in the section 408 of the charter, the ability to spend in an emergency on the general fund. It's just, this makes it clear that casino gaming revenue, gaming revenue, could not be used for emergency expenditures. I think that answers the question you raised earlier in the public hearing.
Okay. So then what Denise said is in... And just forgive me, but I just got scratch marks around some...
All right, I'll say it again.
Okay.
So it will read, shall the town charter be amended to allow casino gaming revenue to be used on debt service, capital development, or infrastructure, and to prohibit its use on the operational budget?
Okay.
I'm getting tired.
Which I accepted, by the way.
And I still second it.
Which, I have the amendment, and I have a second.
There is a second?
Yes.
Okay.
Any further discussion?
Are we voting the amendment, or are we voting the whole thing?
We're going to vote the amendment.
Amendment then...
Love it.
Yeah, but John, I know you can't hear what Patricia wants to talk. We can't hear what she wants to talk.
So here's my only concern on this. When we discuss this, part of what we discussed in that we didn't bring forward anything about increasing the general reserve fund, which is 3%, which is about two months of operations. I mean, literally. If, you know, Armageddon comes, we can pay the bills for about two months, and then we are sunk. And... But hang on a second. So we didn't, you know, we didn't address that through this charter review commission of trying to increase that, in part because what we had discussed was that, you know, is a backstop emergency. So here's just one idea. Instead of saying that we can't touch it at all if there's a huge emergency, what if we could only touch it if we run through all the general reserve fund? In other words, if we have enough for two months to keep the place afloat for two months if there's a, you know, a category five hurricane? What if the language said instead that this, which we had talked about sort of being as an emergency backstop to the emergency backstop, and that's why we didn't raise the emergency backstop, could only be accessible in case of a declared emergency, and we had, you know, basically emptied out the restricted reserve fund? I just... I feel like... You know, we bounced around the idea that, you know, 3% is... It's nothing. It's really... It's a tiny amount of money if anything really goes wrong. And on the other hand, we don't want to, you know, tax people to increase it, but I'd feel pretty foolish if something ever happened and we ran out of money and we couldn't borrow from this fund if we had to.
If we had that hurricane come up the coast and do this damage with no casino, we'd have to deal with it. Right now, we're going to get one point... Well, we're going to get $1.1 million a year back into the general fund, reserve some of that. Take some of that money, leave this revenue money so we can pay our bills and get this town straightened out.
But we can't. I mean, we could. We can try, but the Budget Committee and the voters, or petitioner's budget every year, can take as much as that as they'd like up to the, you know, as long as they leave us the 3%. I'm just throwing that out as an idea, as whether or not that would make people feel more comfortable about... We really have no intention about using this for operational things, but if it really comes to that, in a real emergency, and we've been through the general reserve, that we would have a way to access this. If folks don't like it, that's okay. I'm just throwing it out there.
Madam President?
Yes.
Okay, so that's what I was saying originally when I added in the debt service, capital development, infrastructure, or the emergency slash reserve fund, and to prohibit the use of the operational budget. But Randy, to your point, what this says is that it may be used for those. So it doesn't have to be, and don't forget, if this is going to go with an ordinance, then someone might say, okay, one year we want to do this, but we're not going to do... We're not going to touch... Because it says it may be used for those broad categories. That doesn't say it has to be used for those. It could... It just may be used.
Correct.
So that's a way that you give these broad categories. It doesn't... It's... It gives us an idea of where we're going, but it doesn't restrict us that you have to put it in those broad categories. But I think that's the reason that those are the four main things. And the thing I was very concerned about was just hiring a bunch of people, you know, from this casino budget. And it's like, that's what everybody has been saying, don't do it. But there's also been the concern that the reserve fund is so low, which we've also heard. So this is, if you say May, that should take care of your concerns.
Right, but when we put this money into those accounts, we wanted it a little general, so it wouldn't be totally locked up. But it has to be used for those four items only.
Right.
But just because it's in column A, doesn't mean it has to stay in A. It could move to B if you need it.
Well, that's... Well, that's it, and it'll also change year to year. But if you've got debt service, that takes care of so many things. Capital development takes care of so much. So does infrastructure. So does the reserve fund.
Yeah, I just don't want to see the... I just don't want to...
You want to see what?
I just like to see the money locked up, so we get lower taxes and the best of everything.
But all of this is true. They should go to lower taxes. But it should give some kind of flexibility.
Right, and it's there. That's why we did it that way. And it's there. That's why we did it that way.
That's right.
Am I right, Tony?
I think you confused me, Tony.
I think what Councilwoman Ryan is saying is she'd like to see one of the categories be a reserve or emergency fund that could be funded from using revenues, gaming revenues. Is that correct?
Yeah, just imagine. So, but it doesn't have to be.
Well, yes, it does, because if you're making these four accounts, it does.
No, it says it can be used. You can put, you can choose not to use, you can choose to put...
Not if it's in the charter, you have to have these four accounts.
You have these accounts set up, but it may, because this is going in concert with an ordinance and the vote for the FTR. So, if someone says, no, we're not, we're not putting, you know, we want to put this much amount in the debt service. It's not going to, it doesn't say anything about they have to be equal. It doesn't say anything about 20, you know, one quarter each. And it also doesn't, it doesn't say, some year you could put zero, some year in a particular category, because at a certain point, you're not going to need as much.
Right. And that's why we set it up that way, so it wouldn't be locked specifically for that one.
All right. So, I have a motion on the floor. Let's vote on that motion. If it fails, then we can do what you want, right, Christine? Because I have a motion on the floor.
You have a motion, but didn't you amend it?
It is, right.
I have the motion to amend.
Yes.
But I'm voting on the amendment right now.
Correct, yes.
Okay, so, did you read the amended? Shall the town charter be amended to allow casino gaming revenue to be used on debt service, capital development, or infrastructure, and to prohibit its use on the operational budget? So, the amendment took the emergency out of it. No, it's just to clean this up so we can move forward in a different way. Because if it fails, then we can do the next motion.
Provided I accept the amendment.
Oh, I thought you did accept that amendment.
I know, I accepted this amendment. But I mean, if this amendment fails and somebody offers up another amendment, if I don't accept the amendment, then it doesn't go in.
Then your original motion...
Then the original motion, which would be the entire thing.
The whole time, right. Because we still have a motion and an amended motion.
Okay. So, just one question for clarification.
Go ahead.
You keep saying four things, and all I see is debt service, capital development, or infrastructure.
I didn't say four things.
Right. I say three, the four things with emergency. So, just a question for clarification. So, if we wanted to use this money for increasing the percentage of the general fund, we couldn't do it because it's not in the list. If we wanted to do it to fund unfunded liabilities, we couldn't do it because it's not in the list. We'd have to have a charter change. Correct. So, it would only be restricted to these three things. And if we really needed it for unfunded liability, we couldn't put it there.
That's correct, yes.
And if we needed to, say, for a long-term financial plan, we should plan to have the percentage go from 3% to a higher percentage of the general fund.
But that would be totally not using gaming revenue. Is that, is that what you're saying?
But you could, you could, in fact, say, take some of this money to help to increase the percentage of the minimum value in the general fund, because other towns have 8%, 9%, 10%, and we have 3%.
Well, that's not the town council's fault. It's the budget, though.
Actually, to answer your question...
It's in the, it's in the charter, isn't it?
The answer is, is you could, but not under this language.
Right.
Not under the...
You know what I'm...
The amendment that you just did.
No, under this line, right, under this...
Right, under the amendment she just did, that would not take care of that.
The amendment hasn't been voted on yet, though.
I don't even think I'm voting on the amendment, but anyway. John made that amendment.
I accepted your amendment.
Okay. I just have a real quick question, guys. So, what you're saying, Joan, is you would like to add more categories to this? Is, okay, that's what I, okay.
Correct, because I think these three categories are restrictive, and I think that's what Chris has been saying, that if we wanted to increase the percentage of the general fund from 3% to 4% in the next two years or next five years, we couldn't do that using gaming revenue. We'd have to tax the people in order to increase the amount in the general fund.
So, Christine, you want to put some in the general fund? Is that what you're saying? You've never said that.
Oh, I said this a while ago. What I wanted to do was to combine some of the categories. So, one of the categories was emergency slash reserve fund, and people objected to that. But I'm wondering if we could also do, to keep the categories broad but keep them manageable, can't you do debt service slash unfunded liability? Because that would, that would keep you at broad categories.
But why didn't we do that when we had this last discussion instead of doing it now?
I have been trying to do this for months, so I don't want to get into that.
No, I mean, why didn't you make that...
Over a year.
...motion when we were doing this, though?
We didn't have the wording.
Oh, okay.
We had it right here.
Well, we had the wording, yeah. We named those wording.
We didn't have this wording.
Right.
Oh, I see.
Until we got this, stopping it.
Right, right, but that's what we told him to put in this wording. I know we did.
No, I kept on, kept on putting in when, at that last meeting, I kept saying emergency reserve fund. I kept saying that.
All right. I don't remember that. I'm sorry.
I do.
Well, no. I close, I've never told you you couldn't speak in your life, but you really can't right now. I'm sorry. I close the hearing.
I'm going to say, I'm a little confused quite why we're here, because I thought we had a long discussion about this. I thought we gave the town solicitor direction and said, this is, this is what we want as a majority. This is the question that we wanted, and I think the question that we got is pretty much it. And, and I thought the whole reason that we were willing to look the other way on the general fund being at 3% would be that, you know, this money, in case of real dire emergency, if we burn through the whole restricted general fund in an emergency, there was language in here that said, okay, if we absolutely have to, because it's life or death, we can get to it. And we were all comfortable with that. So, I'm a little lost right now.
Councilwoman Hilton, you're exactly correct.
Madam, Madam President?
Yes, Joan.
My notes from the meeting at the senior center had debt reduction, liabilities, infrastructure, and capital improvements. That's my notes. That's the four categories I put down.
And when I read this, I looked at my notes. I don't have that.
That's what I have in mind.
Yeah, I don't...
And Madam President, and I remember saying many times, I don't agree with you, Councilwoman Hilton, that that was, that everybody agreed on that, because I kept saying emergency reserve fund. I brought up the liability. And the only, one way I'm suggesting is that we can, we can get around this by just combining some of the, not one big lump, but if you can say debt service and unfunded liability, that takes care of one. It still gives us, it keeps us a manageable part. And, but it takes care of, we've got capital and equipment, improve, infrastructure, and the reserve fund emergency. And that takes care of it, because it says, again, the language here, and I read this and I was horrified, because I just said, did not say, oh, they got what we said. I said, ah, they didn't get what we said.
That was the motion, though. I read them, honestly, I don't have what you have there. I'm sorry, Joan.
That's fine. I don't have what you have.
Yeah, I'm sorry. I missed it, because I did look to see what my notes were.
Madam President, can we vote on this amendment at some point?
Yeah. All right. So, let's vote on the amendment. I have a...
Are there two, are there two motions here or one?
You're voting, you're voting to amend the language to go on the ballot by striking the phrase...
And I did that because of you, Christine, because you didn't want emergency, you didn't want anything to go into the operational fund.
Absent emergency declared by the town council.
Can you repeat that, Joan? I didn't hear what I was...
Go ahead. Trace, trace, trace.
Is there a second motion? Did John make a motion?
For the entire thing.
So, John made a motion for the entire thing. Denise has an amended motion.
Right.
Okay, that's what I was trying to...
Yes. Christine, did you want to say something?
I wanted to hear what Tony had to say, because I still think we've got, it's not clear. I wanted to...
I wanted to hear, I wanted to hear what Tony had to say, because it's not clear to me. You say the whole thing, and it's like, so, Tony, if you can say what it is, yeah.
The amendment is to strike the following words, absent and emergency declared by the town council.
Yes.
Go into operational budget, because that's what you wanted. That's what you...
So, as amended, it would prohibit its use on the operation budget.
Right.
And that's why I put that there, because I thought that would satisfy your concerns about putting on...
That, that was one of my concerns. By other concern was the emergency funding. I asked, could we do that as well? And you said, no. You just wanted to keep it without that.
Can I clarify this?
Wouldn't the emergency fund go, go into the operational budget if we needed it to? Then why even change that, then? Because if, if we had an emergency fund, we're going to use the emergency fund if we can't pay our bills. So, that would go into the operational budget. That's the only reason why I changed it, but...
Okay. And I think part of the problems is, is different definitions of operational budget and different...
What do you mean?
Well, when I say operational budget, my main concern is that I don't want to hire a bunch of people and say it's, say it's emergency.
But we wouldn't do that for an emergency. This is like a declared state emergency.
Yeah, I know. Well, Tony offered a couple of phrases. Could you?
From, from, this is, let me just say this from a, from a Roberts Rules standpoint on this, and based on the discussion that we've heard. This amendment should be voted on first.
Right.
If it's approved, then you will have, you'll still have to vote on the language there, absent, the language that's been struck. At that point...
What do you mean?
In other words, you still have to vote on the, on the, on the main motion, because it's an amendment. Okay? The motion is to approve. This is an amendment to strike this. Okay? That's the first vote on the, on the amendment. At that point, somebody has the opportunity to make a second amended motion to include the language that you've discussed. Then after that, you have to vote on the main one, whether it's approved or not. So, that's procedurally what you're looking at to do here.
Madam President, before we go too much more here, what Joan has down, her four categories, I know, but somewhere, before we...
No, 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 no. I'm not arguing with Joan. I'm just saying that I don't have a...
Before we vote on this, because, I mean, we worked for a long time on this. That's where that money needs to go, because we do have to, the biggest thing we had was paying off our debt. I have no problem paying emergencies, you know, that's, if it's, if it happens, it happens. But we need to get a line in there to pay our debt. I want to make sure that we can get...
What is that?
Debt service.
What is that?
Debt service. So, long as that's in there, that's, that's, okay.
Debt service, yeah.
All right. There's been a lot of, and I've been trying to suck it all in here, but it's hot.
I know. I need a little breath, I think. All right. So, I have a motion. I, we are voting on the amendment, and I have a second to it.
We read the amendment.
I did four times now.
Shall the town charter be amended to a...
Amendment is to eliminate the following language.
I'm sorry. I don't mean to get frustrated. I'm going to take a break, though.
Absent and emergency declared by the town council. It's to strike that language.
Okay.
All right. So, the motion's been made in second on the amendment. All those in favor? Four against? Two.
All right. So, now we are, we have struck absent and emergency declared by the town council.
Is there a second amendment? Is there a second amendment?
No, there isn't. Well, no one's...
Not yet.
Does anyone want a second amendment?
I have one question, because Counselor Shabett brought this up, that we've discussed unfunded liability.
I thought you were going to add that.
Does debt service include that category? Yes or no?
No.
Should it?
I think Pete has thought it did.
I'm, I have a concern about that, and, and I understand where you're coming from. Broadly, you could say that, but an unfunded liability...
Well, in theory, we could borrow, fill the liability, and then you get the money for debt service.
See, I don't, I don't view an unfunded liability as a, as servicing a debt.
What I'm saying is, I'll use an example, OPEB, right? That's, that's, that's what we're all thinking of, OPEB. We have today, as it stands, a $22 million hole. So, in theory, if the net present value is 22 million, the town could go out, borrow or bond 22 million, dump it into the OPEB account.
Why would you do that?
And then now you can, that's how you would gain access to the casino revenue to pay it back via debt service. If interest rates were super low, it might make sense. You never know.
I don't like touching that money.
I'm just saying, I, listen, that's just hypothetically how you could do it.
That sounds complicated.
I think, I think it's hypothetically how you could do it. I think one of the risks I see with, and I realize that OPEB is an issue, we have to, we've got to fund it. But, you know, part of the reason that we're in the position we are with a lot of our post-employment benefits is that over the years, it was easier to kick the can down the road. Rather than paying people a fair salary, it was easier to offer them up these post-employment benefits that some other council and some future citizens would have to worry about. Now, the chickens have come home to roost. And I'm a little worried that if we start making this casino gaming revenue available, even in the slickest financial ways for post-employment benefits, that there will be temptations for council's future, you know, to, to go back to that model. And I, I really, really don't want to do that. I, I just think it's a mistake, as much as I understand the slickness of your financial plan, John.
I'm not, I'm not saying that is my preferable financial plan. I actually don't think that we should have any of the casino revenue go to unfunded liability.
All right. I'm going to ask once again, is there another amendment? So, okay, so now we're going to vote on the original motion. Is that what you're telling me, Joan?
Yes, if there's no, no second amendment.
There's no second amendment, so we are voting on this minus the absent and emergency declared by the town council.
It's the entire thing without my amendment. I don't know.
Your amendment passed.
This is right. My amendment passed. We don't have to vote on the original motion.
Technically, you have to.
I've never done that, though. I'm sorry.
Now, you're going to vote on the main.
Yes, yes.
But the main motion will, but Nancy, the main motion will cancel my amendment.
No.
No, no, no.
Because the main motion is, it's now the main motion as amended.
Okay. So, let's vote on that now.
This is to move, and this is to move forward, item number 12.
As amended.
As amended.
As amended.
Love it.
Without the-
Yes.
Correct.
Motion been made and second on-
Without the prohibition on the operation budget.
Correct.
What? No, no, no. It's the same exact motion that we just voted. It's my amended motion we're voting back on. All right. You got that? Okay.
Yeah. But that was what you just wanted. You wanted to take off the-
Yes. All right. So, motion's been made and second. All those in favor?
Could you just tell me your second amendment?
It was Randy.
Randy.
I have to go to the bathroom.
That was painful.
There's one more question.
I know. I have to go to the bathroom.
You could talk about this stuff for hours.
You can't, because it's important. That's a lot of money.
Hey, are you guys running out of tape over there, or what?
So-
10 minutes? Okay.
So, number 13.
Madam President?
Yes.
Motion to put forward number 13 and with the, with the change that the signature requirement moved from 200 to 400.
Do I have a second on that? No.
Seriously?
Seriously. Do I have another motion?
Madam President, I'll make a motion to put forward question 13.
Push the button.
Push your button. I'll make a motion to put forward question 13. Do I have a second on that?
Second.
Any discussion?
Madam President?
Yeah.
Based on Councilor Hilton's very industrious research, I think that the signature requirement should go up, you know, as Councilor Hilton so eloquently put it. It's not a bad thing for Tiverton to have a little bit of normal. And I think if normal is-
So, keep it at 200.
I think if normal is 3% of the voters, that seems to be the baseline number, that that's what we should be at. But I think any changes to the FTR are a vast improvement over our current system of government today.
All right. So, I have a motion and a second. Any other? Joan, go ahead. I can see you putting yourself on over there.
I'm just doing my thing over here. And I will vote not to move this forward, and the reason being is that there are many pieces to this that certain people will say, oh, I don't like the 200, and will vote against it. Or they don't like a specific section in here, like we, Mr. Locken, Dr. Locken didn't like the town council, school committee, and budget committee being restricted from putting in a petitioner's ballot, electors' ballot. So-
So, we could separate this into other questions. Like, we, we could make each category a question.
So, I would not vote it as a complete package. And I'm not sure that we have the time to do that, so.